Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order and we will begin. Board member Betty Jenkins, will you please open our meeting?
Yes, if you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance at the ward if you stand for the moment's silence.
Our pledge remains to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. We are now at recognitions and I will begin tonight's meeting by remembering three students who passed away in 2021. And although we celebrate their lives and the positive impact they made on the Guilford County School family, our hearts are extended in grief to their loved ones. On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to extend our deepest condolences to the families, friends, and teachers of Basile Wilson, Cameron Robertson, and Brendan Redfern.
Basile Wilson was a student with a great smile. He arrived early at Dudley High School each day where he would greet his teachers and staff as they entered the building. Basile was excited about high school and took an interest in being an active member of Dudley High School Air Force Junior ROTC. He has shown such a great leadership and integrity in a short time that he was going to be a, made a junior officer. Basile had a light that glowed and shined on others. His English teacher said he participated well in class, showed evidence that he had a bright future ahead of him. His peers enjoyed being in class with him and said that he was a real fun person with a good sense of humor.
Cameron Robertson was a Sedalia Tiger and represented the school's character traits of being respectful, responsible, and safe. He was eager to learn, always had a smile on his face, and was an encourager to others. Cameron rose to the challenge of learning his sight words with perseverance. He would practice a few words for homework and be ready to show what he knew almost every day. He was competitive in class and at recess. He was the first to kick a ball around and run all, and run with all his might to be the first to get the ball back. During indoor recess, he could dance like no other. Cameron built friendships and was loved by his Sedalia family.
Brendan Redfern was a kind and gentle young man. He had a great respect for his teachers and all the staff at Page High. He greeted them daily with a smile and a handshake. And on his first day as a high school student, he said, "Good morning, sir. My name is Brendan Redfern. It is a pleasure to meet you." He came to class ready to learn and was always prepared. Brendan would also help his fellow classmates if he understood the lesson and they didn't. He had a contagious laugh and made everyone feel like a friend. Brendan has been greatly missed at Page and will live forever in our hearts as a gentle old soul who loves life, family, and his friends.
Although we were only privileged to know these students for a brief amount of time, in their own ways, they helped to create heartwarming memories that will be cherished forever. To honor these students, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we would like to invite any family members or school representatives in attendance to come forward to receive condolences from the board. Next, we will, next we will recognize our April Employee of the Month, Amber Meisenheimer. Will you please come to the podium? Southern High Office Support Amber Meisenheimer was in a rush. It was her daughter's 15th birthday and they had an appointment at the DMV to get her permit. Bless you. But before that could happen, she was surprised with something else, a $50 gift card and the news that she was named the April Guilford County School Employee of the Month. Front office staff members do many things at a busy high school, including helping students with their medical care plans. Amber was nominated as Employee of the Month by Assistant Principal Allison Adams, who recounted a recent event when she was assisting a child and quickly recognized something was not normal. The student's sugar was very low and Meisenheimer provided the needed juice and then stayed with her to monitor changes. When the numbers didn't improve, she called for administration to assist, then got the student's mom and EMS responders involved, who determined that the student needed additional care. This action was indicative of Amber's care for our students, wrote Adams. She worked with this student enough to quickly recognize that this was not, this was out of the norm for her. This quick caring competence ensured this student had what she needed and recovered. Amber received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s and during the month of April, her photo will hang at the District Central Office, at Southern High School, and at the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Anita Sharp to read aloud this certificate honoring Amber.
It's my privilege and honor to present this certificate to you as the Guilford County Schools' Employee of the Month for April 2022. We know that you go above and beyond and have a love for our students and we want you to know that we appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you would like to share a few words, you may. You don't have to. But you may.
Okay. I'm just truly honored to be receiving this award and to be an employee of Guilford County Schools.
Well, thank you. We're certainly lucky to have you. For our next recognition, we will celebrate students who earn state championship titles in their respective winter sports, which include wrestling, swimming, and diving, and indoor track. It is my pleasure to ask Director of Athletics Lee Hebert to come forward to the podium to help recognize these individuals and their coaches. I just saw Lee a few minutes ago. And what looked like some of our students. There you go. Welcome, Lee.
So we're gonna bring all the athletes out.
Yes.
And they're gonna line up across the front.
It's your show.
So thanks for your patience.
Absolutely. It's always exciting.
All right. Good evening, everybody. And as normal, it's my pleasure to be here to recognize some outstanding athletic achievement by some individuals we had during winter sports. Unfortunately, we did not have any teams to win state championships as we did in the fall, but we did have quite a few individuals, as you see, who earned individual state titles in a variety of sports. In spite of my own concerns, and even though I advocated for sports to go forth, one of the concerns I had was about wrestling, where they could even make it to the end of the season with COVID going on. But they did, and we actually had a state championship at the Coliseum, and it was as normal as whatever a state championship could be in wrestling. And we did have two individuals win state championships in wrestling. First, from Northwest Guilford is Drew Peppin. He won the 4A State Championship at 152 pounds. He's a junior and coached by Ron Baer. And also attending tonight is Principal Ashley Young. From Page High School, we had Jacob Woodburn, 4A State Champion at 145 pounds. He is a senior. He plans to attend the U.S. Coast Guard Academy. He's coached by Maurice Copeland. His principal Eric Negley is here. And if I didn't say Coach Ron Baer for Northwest Guilford is also here tonight. And Ron Baer, in his own right, will be honored in a couple of weeks as an inductee to the Wrestling Hall of Fame. So congratulations to him also. We did have one diver this year to earn a state championship title. I'm not sure when the last time that was. I'm pretty sure it's the first one we've had in at least 13 years, as long as I've been doing this. I don't know how many of you know, but really, we struggled here to get a diving program up and running. But we did get it up and running, and so it's, it's nice that we have at least one state champion diver at this point in time. She unfortunately is unable to be with us tonight. Her name is Bailey Cranford. She's from Ragsdale High School. She earned a state championship in diving with a score of 431 points and qualified her as an All-American also. She's coached by Julie Waters. Next, men's indoor track. And we had quite a few here with the men's indoor track team. First, from Southern Guilford, I know Principal Mothers here, but they had one individual win a state championship, Nick Blackston, who won a state championship in the 55-meter hurdles. He is a junior. He's coached by Larry Ratliff. Then from Dudley Men's Team, we had several individuals. Principal Lysay Timmons-McLaughlin is here with them. They were coached by Tequille Jackson. And the individuals, first Cordell Bartley, who's a freshman, he won the state championship as part of the men's four-by-four-hundred relay team. Lee Ezra Brown, as a freshman, was part of the four-by-two-hundred-meter relay team. RJ Baker was a junior. He's a member of the four-by-two-hundred relay team. Terrence Oats, another junior, part of the four-by-four-hundred relay team. Isaiah Monroe, state champion in the 300-meter dash, part of the four-by-two-hundred-meter relay team, and a member of the four-by-four-hundred relay team, all of which won state champions. He's a senior. Also in the 300-meter dash, he set a state meet record at 34.22 seconds, and he is committed to run track at North Carolina A&amp;T. Next, Michael Shaw was state champion as a member of the four-by-two-hundred-meter relay team. He's a senior and plans to attend North Carolina A&amp;T. And then lastly, on the men's team, Jonathan Smith, he was part of the four-by-four-hundred meter relay team. He's a senior and is currently undecided about where he's going. And then we have the women's track team from Dudley. They are coached by Earl Barnes. First, Eliza Darden. She was a member of the four-by-two-hundred relay team, and she was a freshman. Next, sophomore Gabrielle Cheek, also a member of the four-by-two-hundred-meter relay team. Natalia Daniels, junior, part of the four-by-two-hundred-meter relay team. And Sadiya McGregor, state champion as part of the four-by-two-hundred-meter relay team. She's a senior, and she is committed to run track at Winston-Salem State University. As normal, these individuals represented Guilford County well. They make us proud to go off and do great things like this, and we're certainly proud of their outstanding achievement. Congratulations to all of you. Ms. Hayes, I turn it back over to you.
Yeah, I was just trying to see you over there. So if you will, if you, if you'll loop around that way, we'd like to shake all of your hands. And so you all do this really better than any of the folks up here to coordinate yourselves. There you go. We've got somebody up there handling that. Okay, all right, all right. So proud of you guys. So proud of you guys. Thank you so much. So proud of you. Congratulations. So proud of you. All right, you gotta make that decision, all right? Congratulations. That's so awesome. My son went to Winston-Salem State. Congratulations. So proud of you all. Congratulations. So proud of you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Nice to meet you. Thank you. All right, well, we've certainly missed all of this, so that was wonderful. All right, we are now at Item D under recognitions, and this is, the Board of Education is proclaiming April 17 through the 23rd as National Volunteer Week in Guilford County Schools. I'd like to turn to Board Member Kim Erby to read the proclamation.
It reads, "Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize individuals to take action that supports our community and public schools. And whereas individuals, organizations, and businesses connect with local volunteer opportunities through Guilford County Schools, 126 schools, to help transform learning and life outcomes for every student while adhering to school health and safety protocols. And whereas during this week, all over the nation and in Guilford County, projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. And whereas our schools' volunteer coordinators play an essential role in welcoming, organizing, and motivating our district's volunteer force of over 5,000 individuals, who have contributed nearly 60,000 service hours thus far. And whereas our volunteers and volunteer coordinators' contributions are essential to the district's success. Now therefore, we, the Guilford County Board of Education, hereby recognize April 17 through the 23rd, 2022, as National Volunteer Week. We encourage all citizens of Guilford County to recognize those who serve and volunteer in the community and in our local public schools as we come together to make a difference."
Thank you. Thank you. We are now at a public hearing, and this is in regards to the renaming of the Middle College at North Carolina A&amp;T State University, the second reading. So this public hearing will allow members of the community who are in support of or in opposition to the proposed name for the Middle College at North Carolina A&amp;T State University. There's a maximum of five minutes that's granted to both sides with a total of 10 minutes designated for the public hearing. So if there's anyone here that is interested in speaking in favor or, in favor first and then in opposition, please line up on the wall there and we will hear from you. All right, so since there are none, we have not received any, we have received information in support. I don't believe we have received any information in opposition to that. Is that correct, Mr. Mattson? Great, thank you. So now we will vote to approve the nomination to rename the Middle College at North Carolina A&amp;T State University as the A&amp;T Four Middle College at North Carolina A&amp;T State University. The facilities naming committee recommends that we vote to approve this nomination, so is there a motion? All right, I think we can vote on our machines. Oh, before we vote, I would say that Pat Tillman is on the phone, and Winston McGregor is unable to be with us here tonight. So we can use our pads to vote. All right, Pat, how do you vote? Thank you. And that passes unanimously. So thank you and congratulations. We are now at our public comments. We have a maximum, a maximum of three minutes is granted to each speaker with a total of 30 minutes designated at the beginning of the meeting. As we call your names, we ask that you come to the podium, give your name and your address, and begin your comments. They'll, the timer will begin when you begin giving your comments. When the amber light comes on, you will have 15 seconds left, and when the red light comes on, your three minutes has passed.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I see the A&amp;T folks are here, and I think they were in the hallway.
I did recognize Travis Seeger. Okay, I'm sorry. If it's okay with the board, we'll just rewind and give you all an opportunity. Principal Seeger, would you like to come forward and, and make any comments? It has passed. The board voted unanimously for the renaming, but we apologize with all of the recognitions and remembrances this evening that you got lost in the shuffle. So still glad to see you.
It is perfect. Fine. Thank you so, so much. I did, I was able to bring pretty much a lot of my community. We have former parents, current parents, staff members out here tonight, just super excited. Thank you so much. We are happy about this name change. Just the fact that, you know, we now get to cement ourselves even more so in the legacy of the A&amp;T Four. Thank you all so much. We look forward to it. This is only going to grow even more of our, our education and leaning into our students, learning about the A&amp;T Four, but just what they stood for, how they grow. So thank you so much. We thought they, I thought they also, they were all preparing speeches and everything to come up and talk tonight as well, so they have their names, I think, on the list to also just speak and just say how much they're excited for the, the name change. But thank you all so much.
Well, thank you. And thank you for your leadership over our students at the Middle College. So our first speaker of the evening is Keith Pemberton, followed by Dr. Jennifer Shaw. All right, Dr. Jennifer Shaw, followed by Kari Garvin. You're on deck. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Honorable members of the Guilford County School Board, our esteemed superintendent, and your excellent staff members. My name is Jennifer Shaw. My address is 7928 Bayfield Lane, Greensboro. I'm a retired physician, so I spent many years in school. I'm a 36-year resident of Guilford County. I have two adult children, who are graduates of Guilford County Schools, and I'm now the proud grandmother of a one-year-old. My mother was an elementary school teacher. My sister was a longtime high school U.S. history teacher, and then curriculum coordinator at her school system. I have spent many hours at dinner tables discussing education, and I want to comment on just a few areas. First, I've been watching Guilford County Schools struggle with unequal facilities across the county for the entire time that I have lived here. My children attended some of the worst resource schools in this county and some of the best resource schools in this county, and there were caring professionals in each setting. However, it is incumbent on all of us who are citizens of Guilford County to ensure better distribution of resources to students all over the county, something I know that you struggle with all the time. I also know that your attempts to equally distribute contracts to minority women business enterprise businesses has not been as successful as you might have hoped. Children who are Black, Indigenous, people of color represent the largest proportion of students in our schools, and therefore their parents should be the largest proportion of businesses and workers who benefit from the jobs and contract generated by the billions of tax dollars that flow through our schools. Second, I had the good fortune to travel internationally when I was young to countries that restricted speech and access to information. I was so proud to be from a country that allows free speech and freedom to read what we choose. I want all children to have the freedom to read materials that are meaningful to them and that speak to their personal identities, and I expect our schools to provide materials that students can relate to regardless of who they are in their multiple identities. Lastly, and unfortunately, much of the history that my children were taught is exactly the same history that I was taught, without the advantages of the scholarship that's been gathered through the decades since I was in school. I have learned so much more about the ways in which our history was purposely distorted after the Reconstruction era to hide the truth of our past. My hope is that my granddaughter will have the advantage of a more honest exploration of our history to learn all of the history of this wonderful and flawed nation. Thank you all to your service, for your service to our community.
Thank you. Kari Garvin, followed by Maurice Capel. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair and to the board. Thank you for having me. I'm Kari Garvin. I'm with United Way of Greater Greensboro, and just want to spend a few moments here with you this evening just to simply say thank you. Bringing greetings and gratitude for, for all of the support. By the way, I'm, United Way 1500, Antiville is where we are. At, at any rate, really and truly, just, just wanted to spend a few moments to, to express thanks on behalf of the organization. You know, we are, we're running hard trying to end poverty here in our great city, and, and we cannot do that alone and wouldn't dare try. And so we are only able to be successful with, with the groundswell of, of community support that we have been able to enjoy for the, for the last 100 years. And in particular, Guilford County Schools has supported our work. Our records, we could only go back about 21 years. I know it's probably been a longer show of support, but for the last 21 years, I got a couple of numbers for you. $6.2 million is what the school system has, has provided to support our efforts, and we really appreciate that. If you, you know, it's about, about 10,000 or so employees per cabinet, that's about $620 per employee. I think that's pretty significant of, of, of support. And so we want to say thank you. I want to say thank you on behalf of our board and certainly our staff and my colleagues. We've enjoyed the support, like I said, for the last 20 years, including our, our good friends across the county, United Way of Greater High Point. You all have equally supported that good work as well. So I wanted to be careful to acknowledge that and just to say thank you. And do want to extend a special thanks to Dr. Linda Wilson, who, as a campaign committee chair, she's led, you know, the 104 schools and departments to really rally around the work that we're trying to do. So thank you again to her as well, and to you, Dr. Contreras, for your leadership and for your department heads and principals and everyone who, again, who has really just kind of gotten on board. Again, we just want to say thank you for, for all of that support. And so the last thing that I will just say, this year, I mean, through pandemics and, and, and economic hardships and challenges and all of the rest, this year, we received from the school district about $350,000, which is even more than we got last year, right? And so again, we're just very grateful to be able to partner with you in this way to end poverty in, in Greater Greensboro. So again, thank you with that. I will yield the rest of my time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you for the work that you do, and especially thanks to all of our employees for their generosity and support. Thank you. Maurice Capel, followed by Turkishia Moore. Welcome.
Thank you. I am Maurice Capel. I am here tonight in support of our district leaders being able to teach the curriculum and standards. Recently, across the nation, there has been an uproar, and some citizens have spread misinformation that schools are teaching students to be racist. This is simply not true. Schools should be a place where students have an opportunity to learn of our history, including the good and the bad historical aspects. Over the past few months, many community speakers have stood before you and shared their concerns over the Critical Race Theory, CRT, being taught in our schools. As you may be aware, CRT is typically studied in college courses and beyond yet. And beyond that, there are some, there are some groups, such as Take Back Our Schools, that want to spread misinformation to seem that teachers are sharing information to younger students. This is simply not true. I am here today to thank educators in Guilford County Schools for ignoring the nonsense that keeps coming from those who are spreading this misinformation. These individuals are spreading misinformation and making it seem as if teachers are not part of the curriculum. part of the curriculum and standards. Our educators are not teaching CRT to our students. Our educators are sharing the truth, America's history, to all our students. Students deserve the opportunity to be exposed to fullness of America's past. We are and can become, we are and can become better of knowledge. The other thing, voting for the school bond. The district is on track with the projects that the previous bond was approved. There are additional needs across the district. The previous bond helped with getting our facilities up to par. There's also a quarter of a cent, so that's one penny, a quarter of that one penny sales tax. These are funds needed, these funds are needed to support funding for our schools and events such as the North Carolina Agriculture and Technical State University Homecoming, the ACC Tournament, as well as any other activities that occur around the city. This does not impact gas, groceries, or medications. Thank you.
Thank you. Turkishia Moore, followed by Betsy Harrington. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Turkishia Moore. I live at 804 Meadow Edge Trail in Witsit, North Carolina. I'm excited to stand before you to share my thoughts on some of the things that I've seen and heard these past few months as it relates to Guilford County Schools. I'm a former GCS educator, curriculum facilitator, and district-level administrator that had the opportunity to actually support schools and teachers in an instructional capacity. I'm also the guardian of a child attending a GCS school. First, I want to thank the superintendent and this board for your unwavering determination to give students the best education possible and doing it on purpose. This includes making sure that our schools are equitable and that some of our neediest students get the education they deserve. While there are certainly still gaps that exist, I'm happy to see us doing the work to minimize those gaps as much as possible. GCS has always been a leader in our state and certainly now across the country because of our innovative instructional decisions. As a former member of the district instructional support staff, I've seen firsthand the way teachers plan and prepare to teach the required North Carolina standards. The amount of misinformation being spread about what is actually happening and being taught in our schools is alarming and disheartening. Our GCS teachers are some of the best and brightest in North Carolina and deserve so much more than what has been said about them and our schools in recent months. I'm a member of the Greensboro Alumni Chapter of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated, a historically Black Greek-lettered organization that is part of the Divine Non. Our sorority was founded by seven educators, and the vision of our organization is to visualize a world in which all women and their families reach their full potential in all aspects of life and are able to create unlimited opportunities for future generations. It is up to our community to work together to create these unlimited opportunities. I'm also a member of Revival Now Global Church, where our vision is to be a community of presence, power, and purpose. As a person that has a child attending a GCS elementary school, it's important that teachers and students have the support of our entire community to make these public schools the best they can be. We need churches, we need the Greek community, we need everyone. Better schools benefit our entire community. I support the upcoming bond referendum, just as I supported the 2020 bond referendum. The current referendum will allow us to continue to provide schools that are safe and welcoming to all that enter. We cannot keep putting more Band-Aids on the wounds that are old and outdated schools. We must stop the bleeding altogether, and we can do this by voting for the bond referendum. Students deserve that, teachers deserve that, and certainly, our entire community deserves that as well. It's time to start, stop the arguing, the complaining, the back and forth. What purpose does it serve? It's time to focus on our kids, the students. They're the ones who matter and who deserve the best that GCS has to offer. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Betsy Harrington, followed by Dr. Jason Caldwell.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Harrington. I live at 1602 Alderman Drive in Greensboro. First, Dr. Contreras, congratulations on your new position. Thank you for your leadership and your inclusive vision for our schools. Thank you for your dedication to our students and educators, especially during the enormous challenges of education during the pandemic. We'll miss you in Guilford County. Members of the board, I want to thank you for your service. I know you care about the students in our county, and you want them to succeed. Every student deserves a quality school that's fair and inclusive with the resources and technology that they need, and with professional educators who will nurture their curiosity and teach them how to learn. So, I'm here tonight advocating for equitable learning environments for all our students, and equity does not mean that all students need the same thing. Equity means fairness. Unfortunately, throughout our nation's history, there have been harmful policies, structures, and practices that have limited opportunities for many in our school community, and we have a moral obligation not to look away from the impacts that they have had and still have on our children and families across the district. All of us, adults and students alike, need to learn more about our nation's history and the laws and policies and practices that were created to give advantages to white people and to discriminate against people of color. We need to teach truthful, inclusive, accurate history and help our young people in age-appropriate ways to make meaning of our nation's complex past and how that past affects the present that they see unfolding around them. The work of diversity, equity, and inclusion is not to lay blame, but to create ways of operating that ensure healthy learning and development of all young people. Students need to see themselves represented in the curricula, whatever the subject matter. When young people see themselves, their histories, and culture, they're more engaged, they feel a sense of belonging, and they're more able to learn. We can create conditions for all of our students to thrive regardless of their racial or sexual identity, special learning needs, physical ability, or those who are just learning English. I am really concerned that our schools are becoming a battleground for political divisiveness, so I hope you as school leaders will help us unite around our common concern for the success of all of our students who are growing up in a very diverse, rapidly changing world. Diversity, equity, and inclusion matter. Our young people must be prepared to live and lead in that diverse world. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jason Caldwell, followed by Alice Franks. All right, Alice Franks, followed by Margaret Rowlett. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Dr. Alice Franks, for Lee Wood Court, Greensboro, North Carolina. I gotta put my glasses on. So, good evening, Dr. Contreras, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and of course, all staff that are having a really, really late day, later than usual. I'm here to say that I believe all students deserve to learn in environments where they're seen, where they're safe. Certainly, the last couple of years of this pandemic have reemphasized that, the importance of safety for all our staff and students. And our students can flourish when equitable policymaking permeates all of Guilford County school initiatives. The result will be to strengthen our entire community. As a psychologist, I have learned that you give children the wrong message when you tell them they cannot handle the hard stuff. It does not serve us well to avoid our full history. Our teachers are the experts on developmentally appropriate curriculum, so let's trust them to deliver that. We are all tasked with learning our whole history. This includes rich cultures, resilience, and yes, the painful parts. This widened perspective actually could help us reduce future harm and aid in building our rich community that's able, again, to maximize all of our gifts. Personally, what's caused me harm when I was K-12, I know it's hard for anyone to believe I ever was, was when I received an award that I and my peers knew I didn't deserve because of what I look like. But being immersed in history and experiences different from my own in my middle school that just happened to have an Afrocentric curriculum was an incredibly positive experience for me and an amazing opportunity that really shaped my life from then forward. And that shouldn't just be something that happens by happenstance. That should be available for all. For my daughters, who were both graduates of Guilford County Schools, seeing those who didn't share their identities being excluded and unwelcome in AP classes was harmful. But attending Guilford County School programs, Guilford County Schools-supported programs like any town, allowed them to return to their schools with new perspectives and tools for interacting with their peers. Inequitable treatment hurts us all. Who could possibly disagree with the goal of educating all students in holistic environment that's inclusive of all families and cultural backgrounds? Our community will be stronger by every measure and more attractive to businesses and families when we have equity for all. And I'd love to see Greensboro make the news for that, and let's not get sucked into silly season by fighting amongst ourselves. Let's work together and show people we can be better than that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Margaret Rowlett, followed by Reverend Julie Peoples.
Hello, I'm Margaret Rowlett, Twickenham Drive, here in Greensboro, and I'm here on behalf of the Local Movement for Green Schools Now. We've been sending you a lot of emails lately and submitting public comments in recent months, and so I hope you've been reading these as part of your agenda material. And if so, you'll know that we're asking the Guilford County Schools to make a commitment to transition to 100% clean energy by 2050. We're not asking you to make this change today, this year, or even this decade. What we're asking you to do today is to set a goal so that you can make the transition by 2050. 2050 is more than 25 years from now. It's a long way off, but if you don't start planning now, you may not be able to make it. Our students need you to make detailed plans now. Do it for the kindergarteners of today who will be sending their children to kindergarten in 2050. Back in 2005, this board passed a policy that showed the type of clear thinking about the needs of the future that we're asking for today. That policy from 2005 promised that the Guilford County Schools would be good stewards of their resources, and it prioritized energy efficiency. It included the design of buildings and operation of vehicles, as well as education about energy conservation. To all of this, we say yes, yes, yes. With all the work that's needed on our aging school buildings, our community needs to approve the upcoming bond referendum, and as that bond money is invested in the future for new construction and repairs, please make sustainability a top priority. By sustainability, we mean ways to add green energy, like solar panels, but that's not all we mean. Sustainability should also mean rigorous steps to conserve energy. Use natural light, like skylights and large windows. Have outdoor classrooms. There's so many ways that conservation can be a major part of how we reach the goal of 100% clean energy by 2050. But you have to start now. You have to include sustainability in all the plans as new buildings are constructed and others are repaired. That is why we're asking you to pass a new policy and renew that commitment from 2005 to be good stewards while also committing to transition to the 100% clean energy by 2050. Ms. Jenkins, thank you for agreeing to put our proposed policy on the next agenda of the Policy Committee. We look forward to continuing this dialogue with you, and we hope to build on the legacy of those leaders from 2005. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Reverend Julie Peoples.
Good evening. My name is Julie Peoples. I live at 2201 Villa Drive in Greensboro. To Superintendent Contreras, Madam Chair, members of the school board, thank you all for your service to this community. I am a pastor. I'm a mother and grandmother. I am pro-family. I support a strong learning environment and save schools for all. I'm convinced the best way to achieve those fine goals is to fully fund our schools, fully educate our students, and instill a high level of trust in our teachers. We do not create safe and effective learning environments by creating fear over curriculum that does not exist, or by banning books, or by trying to erase large portions of our history, or by distorting the facts. We do not create safe environments by making teachers afraid to teach. We create a strong and safe learning environment by trusting our educators. Trusting our children and youth are more resilient and capable than we often give them credit for, by modeling civil adult behavior for them, by making a priority of racial equity and honoring the needs and dignity of all children. In my nearly 40 years in ministry, I've worked with many families, and I've seen over and over the devastating impact on young people when they get the message that because they are different, they are to be feared or shunned. In my church, among other things, we make sure children and youth learn about other-world religions, Islam, Judaism, Hinduism, and more. We're not afraid that by learning those faiths, it's going to make young people suddenly desire to convert to another religion or to crumble in discomfort. But we are concerned about our world in the future if children grow up ignorant of, fearing, and possibly hating anyone who's different from them. Full, comprehensive, equitable education is the only way to ensure we break the cycle of fear and mistrust and division. Education that fully acknowledges all manner of differences, refuses to value one type of child, one part of the story, one way of being in this world over another. Full, comprehensive, equitable education helps us raise children and youth who are resilient, courageous, wise, ready to create a better world for all. And I do hope my grandchildren are the recipients of a fuller version of U.S. history than what I was. I am saddened by all the reports of targeting and demonizing of you, school administrators, staff, all the twisted half-truths I am seeing being circulated in the public. I hope and pray that those responsible for such actions will reject such bullying behavior for the sake of our children, because they are learning from us. They need us to show them there's a better way. Thank you all.
Thank you. And I said that you are our final speaker. We do have two speakers that did not attend, and so we have alternate speakers, Sarah Molino and the Honorable Derek Foy. So, if they're not here, we will close this portion of our...
I was thinking...
Yeah, you're not on the list. I'm sorry. So, that closes our public comments portion of the meeting, and we are now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Move the agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are now at the consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and members of the community. This evening's consent agenda...
I'm sorry, sir, this is not an open forum. Okay, I'll be glad to talk with you, or a member of our staff will be glad to talk with you outside, or I'll be glad to talk with you on a break. Thank you.
This evening's consent agenda includes the approval of the March Meetings Minute, the Personnel Report, the Class Size Update, and waiver requests. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Move the agenda.
Thank you. All right, Diane? Linda? Kim?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Anita?
No.
Okay, he might, I didn't know, giving him some time to unmute. Okay, he might, I didn't know, giving him some time to unmute. Betty may have stepped away from the phone. And Deana, yes. So that passes by a vote of five to two. We are, and we did have an item pulled from the agenda, and it is under, action items. Right, Item A. We are now at my reports, and just give me just a minute. I have buried everything here. Sorry about that. All right, good evening and welcome. Now is the time for parents to register for kindergarten for the upcoming school year. Registering early helps families ensure they receive all important school messages and allows the district to better plan its staffing allotments. Kindergarten is extremely important to a child's overall academic development. Please register online at Guilford County Schools, North Carolina dot, no, it's GCSC dot schoolment dot net for children who will be five years old by August 31st, 2022. Like to thank you to, say thank you to Guilford Education Alliance for hosting last week's Education Summit, and congratulations to Superintendent Sharon Contreras, who received the Margaret Boudreaux Arbuckle Award. She was also surprised, she also surprised the organization with a $50,000 donation from her own pocket, and I know they are sincerely grateful. The Ed Summit gives the community the opportunity to fully understand the issues that face our district and the progress we have made despite overwhelming odds. Thank you to Winston and her team for planning and executing an outstanding and uplifting event. Congratulations to the Early College at Guilford on its state Quiz Bowl Championship. The Quiz Bowl team will now move on to the national competition in May, and we wish them continued success. We also wish to congratulate the Academy at Lincoln, which came away with seven awards at the State Science Fair. Two of the student winners, Anderson Lamb and Jaden Cho, were in the top 10% of all judged entries and were nominated for the Broadcom Masters National Middle School Science Competition. Say Yes Guilford and Guilford County Schools will host one last session in the Quest to College and Career Webinar Series. The final session is about preparing for the transition to college and will take place on Thursday, April 14th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Visit SayYesGuilford.org/events to register. The federal waivers that allowed all schools to serve free breakfast and lunch to all students are ending this summer. To ensure that students who qualify for free or reduced-priced meals are able to receive those meals on the first day of school, we are asking parents to fill out the application at www.lunchapplication.com. This will establish the family's qualifications for meal assistance for the first 30 days of the 2022-23 school year. A new application must be completed after July 1st for the remainder of the school year. Paper copies of the form are available through your child's school. And finally, I want to recognize Swan Middle, District 8 School, which is celebrating its 100th anniversary. The school held an event on Saturday that included music, games, food, community tours, as well as historical exhibits and updates on the archaeological dig that has taken place on the school grounds. This concludes my remarks, and I will now call on Policy Committee Chair Betty Jenkins to provide an update from the March 2022 Council of Great City Schools Legislative Policy Conference.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Council of Great City Schools Task Force met during our annual legislative conference, which was held in March. I attended several, including Task Force on Black and Latino Girls, Young Women and Girls of Color, co-chair by our very own Superintendent and the Board Chair of Los Angeles Unified Schools, Kelly Gones, and the Board Chair of Oklahoma Nebraska Schools, Dr. Siobhan Holtman. I also attended Task Force on Leadership and Governance, which focused on the governance of our school district. Guilford County School Board has gone through different school outcomes, focused governance training with A.J. Crabhill and Michael Castley, who recently retired. The focus of the training is to help superintendents and school board members understand their proper roles as school board members and the superintendent, and how to focus on student outcomes and oppose to inputs or how the superintendent chooses to work, to get done. Also, I'm sharing this update, the framework, with you because we are encouraged to continue the training, especially as a new superintendent is about to come on board. A few items that was mentioned in the training was, all stakeholders must have a clear vision. We receive our vision from our superintendent, and we hope that that continues. It clearly known the values and the guardrails. Know how you are going to monitor and to be accountable. How effective communication and collaboration are essential components of being successful. Their entire board must unify and trust each other's options. Again, the entire board must unify and trust each other's options. Progress, monitoring, and outcome will increase if adhered to what have been shared along with using meetings on quarterly basis, along with self-evaluation. Having monthly time use for evaluation will continue the improvements of evaluation of tools along with superintendent evaluation. Remember, during monitoring, reality must match the policy. What is true for all students. These are monitoring tools and not managing tools. And I would say that I learned a lot at the conference, and our superintendent did a great job during her presentation. If you want to hear someone speak about a topic, and when everyone get up and stand and clap, that is what happened at our conference. It was a joy, and I felt very proud being there with my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's now time for the superintendent's reports. Dr. Contreras.
Thank you, and good evening again. I want to say congratulations to Northern High School teacher Leah Carper, who was named the 2022 Burroughs Welcome Fund North Carolina Teacher of the Year. She is creative, energetic, present in the classroom, and she knows the importance of trusting and building connections with her students. She will represent Guilford County Schools in North Carolina well, and it was just a joy to surprise her in Raleigh and to see her surprise as she was named our North Carolina Teacher of the Year. We have some of the best teachers in the state, and we should all be proud. Friday marks the five-year anniversary of the devastating tornadoes that destroyed three of our schools. As we look back at that fateful day, we are reminded of how resilient this community is and how strong we can be when we join forces. We look forward to the day when, in just two years, this community will see new buildings to serve the Hampton Peeler Community and the Irwin Montessori Community as a result of funding from the 2020 bond. Deadly high seniors are invited to apply for one of five scholarships from the city of Greensboro. The Morningside Homes Memorial Scholarships are given in memory of Caesar, I want to make sure I say this right, Cause, is it Cause? Caesar Cause, does anyone know? Dr. James Waller, William Evan Sampson, Sandra Neely Smith, and Dr. Michael Nathan, who died tragically in the Greensboro massacre of 1979. The scholarships are worth $1,979, and applications are due to the city of Greensboro by May 15. There is no overall GPA requirement for the scholarship. For more details, visit www greensboro-nc.gov/. College Decision Day is fast approaching, and we want to celebrate our seniors as they announce their college commitments. Seniors are invited to send a selfie video with their name, school, and intended college to goodnews@gcsnc.com. The deadline is Thursday, April 21st. I also want to remind families to be sure to fill out the FAFSA application for federal student aid. Even if you don't think you qualify for need-based aid, the FAFSA is an important state in your child's college application process. Thank you to our high school counselors for their efforts to communicate this message. I'm proud to announce that Guilford County Schools will receive a $2 million grant to support our tutoring initiative. The federal grant was secured by Congresswoman Kathy Manning and will allow GCS to expand its tutoring services, which is helping our students recover from the learning loss experienced during the pandemic. We have also launched an online tutoring initiative for students in grades three through 12 in the subject areas of math and reading or English Language Arts. Students can schedule to meet with a tutor 24 hours in advance and meet virtually to get the help they need completely free. Visit our website for more details and a link to sign up for the service. I wish to thank the Community Foundation of Greater Greensboro for allowing more than 100 of our eighth-grade scholars to attend a performance of The Lion King at the Tanger Center. Students had to complete a service learning project to participate in the event. As Chairwoman Hayes said, this is a reminder that the USDA Child Nutrition COVID-19 waivers are set to expire on June 30th. GCS will return to operating school nutrition under the National School Lunch Program for the next school year. The COVID-19 waivers have allowed anyone under age 18 to receive free breakfasts and lunch since March 2020. The move to the National School Lunch Program means that students will return to school in August in full pay status unless they are enrolled in a community-eligible provision, CEP school, they are identified through direct certification like the SNAP program, or they have a qualified 2021, 2022 free or reduced-price meal application on file. A student's 2021, 22 status will transfer for the first 30 days of the school year in 2022, 2023. However, with the COVID-19 waivers in place, not all families have completed applications this year. So we are asking families to please complete the lunch applications now to ensure that you are eligible for free or reduced-price meals at the beginning of the next school year, and we will ask you again at the beginning of next school year. Also, ACE's registration for the 2223 school year will begin on April 25th, 2022. Links to the enrollment site will be posted on the ACE's website placed on weekly invoices, and current ACE's parents will receive a text message from the online system about registration. In addition, site coordinators will provide their front office staff with flyers to provide the registration information to rising kindergartners and other new enrollees. Site registration is on a first-come, first-served basis until a site reaches capacity. ACE's weekly fees continue to be $65 a week, and ability to accept DSS vouchers will remain the same for the 2223 school year. Guilford County Schools is intentional in addressing the racial wealth gap through innovative education and workforce initiatives for students and families. Initiatives are designed to build pathways that provide dual-generation support, ensuring college and career-ready students and credentialing programs that lead to high-paying, in-demand employment for parents and guardians. Through allocated ESAR funding, we will train parents and guardians through dual-generation workforce development programming, utilizing our newly renovated Signature Career Academy sites. The objective is to train and certify parents and guardians in high-skill, high-wage, and in-demand industry pathways to build and transfer wealth for generations to come. Through strong community and business and industry partnerships such as COMP, TIA, and NC Works, this initiative will begin with providing cybersecurity training and credentialing for our parents. So please look for more information about that initiative. And at this time, I'd like to ask Chief of Student Services, Dominic Robinson, to please come forward to introduce our partners from Cone Health to speak about our school-based telehealth initiative that is growing. I had read a letter to the editor in one of the papers that said, "The new clinics in our schools and lactation rooms were wasteful." And I felt we needed our Cone Health partners to come explain the benefits, the research-based benefits of making sure that children and families had access to healthcare in our schools. So, welcome.
Good afternoon. Dr. John Jenkins started his professional career as a high school science teacher in South Carolina. He later attended MSU SCU in Charleston and came to Greensboro as a primary care physician at LeBauer Healthcare. In 2014, Dr. Jenkins was asked to develop a virtual care division at Cone Health. He has been, he has been a national speaker for telehealth at the American Hospital Association, the Medical Group Management Association, the World Telehealth Congress, and CES in Las Vegas. Dr. Jenkins currently is involved with special digital health projects at Greensboro H-A-H-E-C and leads the Carolina School-Based Telehealth Learning Collaborative, connecting leaders from North Carolina and South Carolina to advance school and community-based healthcare. Please join me in welcoming Dr. John Jenkins.
Thank you so much. So I'm very pleased to be here. Thank you, Dr. Contreras, for the invitation and for the partnership. Thank you, Board, for allowing us to share with you this amazing journey we're taking together. And thank you, Dominic, for being a wonderful partner in helping to advance the program in our schools. So it is a true partnership between Guilford County Schools, Cone Health, and a grant from the Duke Endowment to provide school-based telehealth, first as a prototype in Bessemer Elementary School, soon to two additional schools, and a vision of being able to have all of our elementary school students in Title I schools across the county set a national standard for having access to equitable healthcare through telehealth. I'd like to tell you a little story because we believe and connect to purpose. There was a student whose family recently immigrated from West, from West Africa, and he was seen in our telehealth clinic on referral from a teacher who thought he just wasn't doing well. He seemed very weak. So she brought him to the telehealth center. They got vitals, they noted that, yes, he was indeed weak and should be seen by one of our physicians. So a visit was arranged. She first contacted the father and had a conversation with the father over the phone to make sure that we had consent on file and to make sure that they were willing for us to participate in the treatment. It was evident from the conversation that the father was going to need a translator. And at Bessemer, the number one language we need for translation is Swahili. So she arranged for a translator. She made the connection, sent him a link so that he could participate in the video visit as well as the translator, and then invited the physician to join the visit with the young student. Indeed, the young student was ill. And the telepresenter, who we placed in Bessemer, helped the doctor to do a remote physical examination with camera and with a stethoscope that allowed both the physician and the parent to hear the lung and heart sounds. And as they examined the back, they heard sounds that the physician asked the parent, "Do you hear these sounds, these abnormal sounds?" And she called them crackles. And the parent said, "Yes, I do, but he's really not sick. He's just, he's just, he's not being responsible and not being, he should be more active." The pediatrician had a lot of patients and explained to the physician, to the, to the parent that, indeed, this was most probably pneumonia, and that he needed to be treated with an antibiotic. And then she paid... And then she patiently answered the rest of the parent's questions through the interpreter. That child had a great outcome. Later, our telepresenter called the family to make sure that everything went well. And the mother answered the phone and said, "Thank you so much for seeing my child. We didn't know what we would have to do. We wouldn't know what to do without you having this clinic in Bessemer." And then she expressed a small concern. She said, "I'm not for sure we can pay you back for this visit." And our telepresenter smiled, and the mother couldn't see it over the phone. It touches my heart to be able to do this. But we have grant funding to make sure that no parent who does not have insurance will receive a bill from this program. That is the passion we have around school-based telehealth. So I'm going to share you a little bit about where we're going. Today, we're going to define a common goal. We're going to talk about how we can improve learning together, breaking those barriers of social determinants of health, and talking about the Bessemer story, which is important. And I hope we're going to leave here with a burning passion to create a national standard for health equity in schools and a beacon of Guilford County Elementary Schools. We have a common goal. In reading many of the writings by Dr. Contreras, we know that we have a common goal to ensure success in life for our students. Early dismissals and absenteeism is a major cause of loss of instructional time. That instructional time is the best way we have of advancing our students, giving them the skills and needed resources to be able to become citizens of North Carolina that contribute not only to themselves, to their families, to their communities. A major goal of school-based telehealth is to return students to their classroom as soon as possible. In fact, at Bessemer, 2/3 of the students that we see go back to the classroom that day. And the other students get treatment that allows them to return to school sooner and their instructional activities. Our Title I schools were designed by the federal government in funding to help disadvantaged students advance. There are historical inequities that many of the speakers during the time we listened have addressed in their comments. Equitable access to health and well-being must exist as part of the solution for equity for our students. GCS data shows that poverty and graduation rates are linked. Data from the University of North Carolina shows that health literacy and poverty are linked. The same areas of the map, in the comma zone or the red line zone of Guilford County and High Point, are the same areas where we have issues with our graduation rates. And then if we look at data from our emergency room utilization, we see that that pattern exists in inappropriate utilization of healthcare. This map shows where our children aged 4 to 12 go to the emergency department for routine care: coughs, colds, allergies. Since 2019, over 15,000 students have been seen in the ED primarily during the hours of 6:00 PM and 10:00 PM, which imply that their parents had to wait to get off work to be able to take them to the emergency room after hours, when they could find someone to give them transportation, a social barrier, to watch the rest of their family, a barrier, and to avoid the cost of co-pays to go to a traditional doctor's office. Most of these visits, when we've analyzed them with our analytics team at Cone Health, could have been a telehealth visit at their school that day. Poverty, race, health equity should not be the markers that determine school success. We should be addressing all of these aspects. The Bessemer story is one I'm really happy to share. The school-based telehealth program started as a prototype in April of 2021, and since then, we've seen over 300 students and 240 of them have returned to the classroom. Why are we in Bessemer? Because schools are trusted places. Family members are willing to give us consent to see their children at school because they trust the school and allow us to advance the health. The program at Bessemer starts with a telepresenter, who is a nurse, who is at the school with specialized technology that allows her to create the visit in a virtual exam space so that the parent, interpreter, the doctor, and the student can all be together in that space. We need HIPAA-compliant and FERFA-compliant spaces to do this because we know that health information is protected. And so that's one of the reasons we strongly support the development of clinical spaces in our schools that Dr. Contreras has advocated for so eloquently. The telepresenter then contacts the parent and provides a link for them to join virtually, and interpreter services are brought in, like the Swahili if we need it, and then the pediatrician joins. All of this takes about 10 minutes to occur. There's not a lot of waiting for the student. There's not a lot of waiting for the parents. Specialized camera, digital stethoscope allow an examination that is comparable to a face-to-face examination for our pediatric practitioners, and then they are able to share that examination with the parents, which is phenomenal. We did an example with a possible contributor, and we brought him to Bessemer and had him sit in the chair, and he got examined. And he was amazed that we saw his tympanic membrane and broadcast it, we saw his throat and broadcast it, and we were able to listen to his heart and lungs. And all the participants, one of his colleagues was acting as his parent remotely, could hear and see the examination and gain, remember I talked about health literacy? Gain an understanding of the problem by seeing the exam. These visits are on demand. They result in clinical interventions, often that are as simple as us dispensing a medication that allows the student to return to class. In some cases, we give a prescription. In some cases, we actually accelerate to care. We've had students who had seizures. We've had students who had heat exhaustion. And we've had to accelerate care so that the parents didn't have to worry about sitting in an emergency room and waiting for hours for care. It is so important also to understand the burden on our parents. Our parents, often in our Title I schools, have transportation issues, have financial issues, have families that they're caring for in different levels, and coming to school for an early dismissal is a hardship. I've personally seen students sit for hours in the office, waiting for the parent to be able to arrange for coverage at work, arrange for transportation, and get to the school. If we can reduce a small percentage of those by treating those students and allowing them to return to the classroom, we're going to do a service for instructional time and for the progress of all of our students. We started in the elementary school because that's where problems and habits start. The kid who has a problem with behavior in high school often started because of childhood traumas in elementary school that they were unable to process and deal with. So we do believe that we need to improve this access to include behavioral health very soon. Our schools that we're in now at Bessemer, the Cone Cougar start in two weeks, and a week after that, we start at the Montessori School at Washington. We've entered into an agreement with TAPM, Triad Adult and Pediatric Medicine, to pursue a school in High Point in the new school year. All of this is funded by our current grant, but we have a vision we want to share with you. So the vision for partnership is huge, and I love working with Dr. Contreras because she has a huge vision. We are going to miss her, but hopefully we'll continue working with her in her superintendent organization role. And I love working with them. And all the teachers and principals and staff. We believe strongly in the need for a compliant clinical space that meets the needs of HIPAA and FERFA in every school. We've had to kind of, we're in a closet at one school, so we've had to struggle to make this happen. And so this is a very important vision. We have the vision also together of expanding to all 51 Title I schools. If you look at that common area of High Point, the bulk of the elementary schools in those areas are Title I's. And that's where endemic poverty, where health literacy, where health illness and the overuse of our emergency room, unnecessary use of our emergency room is occurring. And so we want to spread. We are pursuing an ARFA grant from the county. We'd love, if you're asked to support that grant ask, to allow us to go to 20 additional schools. We are pursuing additional grants and gifts from every person we can get. My colleague who is with me tonight is with our institutional advancement group and is helping us to get in front of everybody we can. We are lobbying the state for support. And the organization that we founded just this year with help from a Duke grant is bringing together Atrium, NIVON, the Center for Rural Health Innovation, NUFC in Charleston, CLAB, and UNC Chapel Hill, together to formulate ideas about school-based telehealth, log best practices, collect data to support best practices, and lobby our states to support this through funding. We have a future also. We envision adding behavioral health services. We also see that there's a need to treat our teachers and staffs. When one of your teachers is ill, she has no, or he has no choice but to leave school and a substitute teacher. This puts a burden not only on the school system, but puts a burden on the learning process. Having virtual visits for teachers at school in a safe and HIPAA-compliant space will help that as well. Coordinating with different initiatives about obesity and exercise and nutrition will be important. And interestingly, our camera allows us to do a dental examination, screen, so that we can screen students for then a dental intervention with a dentist at the school to help speed that process of getting our children good dental health. Total child, total school care is our vision. And then there's a vision beyond that. Interestingly, I looked at the plans that Dr. Contreras has endorsed for the school-based clinics. And there's an inside door, and there's an outside door. So wouldn't it be kind of incredible if we started to envision in our community centers, our churches, in our schools, a place where community could go and receive health? This is a broad vision, and it's an ask for you guys to support us as we go across Guilford County, as we seek funding, as we enter into the elementary schools to be of service to our students, to our teachers, and to our families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any question, Diane and Deborah?
Can you go back to your emerged map?
I think I can. Yes.
That's it, okay. This is known in the city of Greensboro as the Crescent Zone. This is where police and fire identify where our poorest housing is, where we have our most incidents of fire and gun violence, all those things. And you can see the curve there, and I'm surprised that 10 years later, I'm sitting here, and it still exists this way. So this is impacting on the children because this is the area where it's, you know, poor transportation, access to, I mean, I could sit here, I'm not going to do it, but, you know, and tell you where we don't have grocery stores, you know, in this area and close to Bessemer School. There is not a full-service grocery store within walking distance of that area. And I think, you know, beyond what you're trying to do, because this Crescent Zone is truly impacting on the health as well as it is on other factors of children or families' lives, period. So I just wanted to, I was just interested, struck that this Crescent still exists, you know, because we, when I was on city council, we, you know, we identified this and, you know, I thought we were doing something about it, but it appears we're not.
So this overlies, each of those little areas are school attendant zones. And so you can see where the school attendant zones are for the schools in the Crescent. And you need to give Dr. Contreras some really props for the fact that if you go to Bessemer Elementary School, their staff, their staff, their staff has a program by which they get food from food banks and make sure families can come up and pick up food from the food bank. It's not the answer, it is an answer, and our schools are centers of a lot of great things.
Well, I would just, you know, like suggest, I don't know if you have the kind of time, but if you would, you know, check with Greensboro Police and Fire, you might find some other, you know, really sad statistics that also impact on, you know, what you're trying to do. And sometimes the right hand does have to know what the left hand is doing in order to, and it may be a way that y'all can help to impact on each other as far as what you're trying to do in this area.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Deborah?
Hey, Dr. Jenkins. The first thing I would like you to do for me, if you would, is say it right in that microphone, say it loud, say it proud, that nothing will be done with any of these students without parental consent.
So we have a wonderful consent process that we partner with the schools. And I actually have copies of that to distribute to you guys, so you guys will see what the consent process looks like. Here you go. Take one and pass it on.
Thank you.
And so at the beginning of the year and at different times in the year, we partner with the school staff to send out to the parents information about the school-based telehealth program and to receive a FERFA and HIPAA-compliant consent for them to participate in the program, release of medical information, and also to participate in the medications that could be distributed and they can agree to or not agree to based upon their beliefs, any medication that we might administer. At Bessemer, 90% of the parents and guardians have signed a consent form for our students. The consent was designed with the help of compliance officers to follow the student through the elementary school experience, so we don't have to reconsent every year, but it allows us to follow them through all years. We're in the process right now, and that's why our starting date is a little bit delayed at our project at Cone and our project at Washington, because we're in the process of getting those consents into the point where we can launch the program. If we see a child, or a child is referred to us who does not have a consent on file, we have the ability to call the parent, discuss the consent, and send an e-consent for immediate signature to the parent so that the child can be treated. Or, if the parent so desires, refer the child out to be treated in a face-to-face visit.
And of course, if at the parent's request, that consent can be revoked at any time, like any other doctor's office, correct?
So you'll see on the consent, of course, lawyers have written the consent, so there is a clause that you can revoke the consent at any time.
Okay. All right. So I'm just thinking about the walkthrough, the visit, the registered nurse that checks in the patient or the student, patient, is that nurse boots on the ground or is that nurse virtual?
So it's not necessarily a registered nurse. Because we have a connection to the physician, we are able to, in real time and a messaging system through our technology platform, we're able to use CMAs and LPNs in place of registered nurses as an expense saving for this program. But interestingly, at Cone Elementary School, where the system has hired an RN, she has been trained and now certified as a telepresenter, and when we start in a week, she'll actually be our telepresenter, and we'll offer to her something that most school nurses don't have, is backup from a pediatrician.
That is a handy thing. How far do our services with these extend? Like, we do the exam, we potentially prescribe or refer out based on the examination. Do they go ahead and schedule a follow-up visit, and how do we ensure that the patients are able to get these medications?
So those are great questions, and questions as this prototype has infurled, we've had to deal with. So So first, the scope of most of the visits ends in the visit, because there's simple problems, most of the issues that our elementary school students have that get dismissed from school for early dismissal can be treated very easily with everything from a soda to calm their stomach to an ice pack for their pain in their knee, or Tylenol, or an Advil. When the problem escalates to a prescription, one of the things we are very careful with in our RICE center is, is to identify a pharmacy where the student can receive the medication at a cost they can afford. The vast majority of these students are on chips or Medicaid, so these are very inexpensive. But occasionally, we have students like the one in the story who have no insurance. And so therefore, we then refer that parent to a place where we know that an antibiotic is free, like Harris Teeter, so that they can get the medication that they need. And we also have the ability to scholarship some medicines through Cone Health. The final question you asked could be answered by, we believe that all students need a medical home. So when we find out that there is not a relationship with a primary care doctor, we refer that student and that family to a medical home so that they can have a pediatrician and can have continuity care rather than just acute care. This is critical because educational evidence shows that students who have medical homes do better in school and do better in life.
Absolutely. And then finally, for the students that we are, that, you know, getting someone into a new office isn't always an immediate thing, of course, antibiotics being anywhere from four days to a couple of weeks, do we do a follow, do we schedule a follow-up with them that day? Do we wait to see if they come back? How, what's our close of the loop?
Very individual. So one thing that is consistent is that every student that is treated receives a call, the family receives a call from our telepresenter. This is part of our nurse-teacher back policy. And in that case, we want to make sure that they got the medication, they were able to administer the medication, the child is improving. In the case of scheduled follow-up, this often occurs at the pediatrician's office if we find the child has not been able to be compliant with long-term medications or they're behind in their preventive services. And in some cases, it's a terminal event. The child feels a lot better. We had one very sweet child who had a stomach ache, we gave him some medicine for his stomach, and he came back to the office two days later. This was in my editorial. And he showed up at the door and our nurse thought, oh, he's sick again. And he said, no, I just came here to find out if you were still here in case I need you.
That's sweet.
And I tell you what, I'm an adult internist, but now I'm an honorary pediatrician because I have just fallen in love with this process.
Thank you. Betty, then Kim?
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. The question I have is, out of the 300 students, you have 60 that did not return to class the same day. What was the average days they were out for the 60 students?
So it depends upon what the reason was. So in some cases, unfortunately, in the world we live in called COVID, there were some of those students who had to be referred for testing and had to have a quarantine period. So some of those were out for 10 days or more. The majority of the ones that had treatments were back at school within a few days. As you know, if it's strep and we start antibiotic therapy, they are non-infectious after the second day of treatment, so they can return on the third day. And in many cases, simple problems like upper respiratory colds and coughs, we just instructed the parents, and this is key part of involving the parents in the visit, into what are the signs and symptoms that need to go down so that you can allow your child to return to school. And this is a key part of our education process to help the parent, empower the parent through health literacy, to be able to make wise choices about the return to school when the temperature is gone and when the symptoms have abated. And that's critical, that's part of our process.
Okay. My next question is, as far as receiving free medication, you mentioned Harris Teeter, but I know the demographics there, parents have lack of transportation.
Sure.
So how are they receiving their medicine, which is free, when it's take six, seven, eight miles to get to the closest Harris Teeter?
And that is a very difficult thing. So eventually, one day, we would like to expand, and we're working with our pharmacy team to figure out how to do this. We would like to expand our services to include point-of-care testing, so we can screen for flu, for strep throat, and include a basic pharmacy kit to be able to give medicines to the children who can't afford them. That is an identified problem, and thank you for calling that out.
Okay. Bessemer is one of my schools, and I thank you very much.
We're glad to be there. And any of you who'd like to come to Bessemer, I believe you came and visited to do that, we'll put you on the computer and give you a visit.
Thank you. Kim?
Is the program available all year round?
So we did, at Bessemer, we did summer school this year. And this summer, we're thinking about where we should locate if indeed Bessemer's not open for summer school. So in that case, we think about community centers where the children could be brought, and that also may help us to get our feet wet with treating their parents. That's a great question, thank you.
I also just wanted to share, I see Michelle, the vice president of Cone Health here, and we discussed on the Community Foundation meeting, the shortage of nurses, and this program is dependent on nurses. As you know, we had problems with our own nursing programs at the high school level this year because of this shortage. And we asked Commissioner Alston to help us with GTCC to expand the number of seats in our middle colleges, so we could re-enroll students who were willing at our traditional high schools and move those nursing programs to GTCC and graduate those students to work in our own telehealth clinics. And that would help us to expand this more rapidly. So that's an ongoing issue. And then we discussed with the chambers there that something has to be done about the transportation issue, because even though we're giving the prescriptions, there are still families who can't get to a pharmacy. And so we need to have a more robust transportation system so that families can not just get to work, students get to school, but also access healthcare. I also shared that in my previous district, Welsh Allen donated all of the medical equipment to every single school in the district for those health clinics. So every single school in that district had a health clinic there. So we can also look to some of the medical providers, supply providers, to ask if they would assist us. We're building the clinics into the buildings, but medical supplies are expensive, and we should ask some of those suppliers to help us with the supply, for supplying the actual spaces. Sorry.
Great points, thank you.
Deborah?
One more, shameless plug. Northern High School is one of the high schools I represent, they do have one of the beginning medical programs there, and yeah, the nursing shortage is not going to get any better anytime soon. If there is any way that I can be of a help to facilitate getting better equipment, more instructors, anything into Northern, that we need to start helping to build the foundation for more nursing staff. They're not just going to show up at our colleges out of magic because, you know, they somehow heard that healthcare right now is a miracle, we all know that's not going to happen. So if there's anything we can do to start getting them in the door, middle school, high school, just beginning to consider healthcare as a career, anything I can do to help with that. I would love, I've walked through those labs with Principal McKenzie at Northern, I would love to see them upgraded because they, right now, look like, very similar to what I went through in nursing school, and that's been longer than I really want to admit to. So whatever I can do to help in that video, please include me.
Very good. So I'm going to put my other hat on for a second. So my other hat is AHEC. So Greensboro AHEC is the Area Health Education Commission. And you know that AHEC has a charge from the state of North Carolina to develop an equitable health workforce for tomorrow. And so we are looking through our partnership with AHEC to advance training more CMAs, training more LPNs, training more RNs that we need, and also recruiting and training virtual physicians to do this role. Because the busy doctor who's seeing lots of patients in his office doesn't want this added on to them. And we need a new workforce, and we need to imagine a new way we care for individuals.
Linda?
What is the sustainability right now, you're working with grants? All right, so I'm, you know, you're going to build all this out. So what will be the funding and sustainability, insurance, how is that going to work long-term?
So if you look at states who are doing this now through a sustainable program, they have made it part of their state support, either through their Medicaid program or through state support of the schools to be able to have health in the schools. One state that is leading the way is a state where Dr. Contreras is from, Maryland, where just passed the state senate and is now in the state house to provide telehealth access for every school in the state of Maryland. So that is why we have to, we have to work with DPI, and DPI has actually joined us in our collaborative, our learning collaborative with those medical groups that I mentioned. The Office of Rural Health is also joining with us so that we can understand what is a sustainable model for this for the future. The problem with everything, when you look at sustainable models, is you have to prove value first. And so that's why we're in Bessemer, that's why we're partnering with you guys, so that we can prove value and then lobby our state and insurance to support this program through qualified reimbursement.
Diane?
This is a facilities question. You know, we've been talking about our new facilities, I haven't really heard a lot talked about as far as, you know, and what I have in my mind as far as a sick room is a chair, a bed, and this little room, which I don't think that's what...
No, ma'am. I would encourage you to look at the models of the eight schools that have been put forth by our superintendent and the board and see the really incredible, I actually attended the educational meeting, which Dr. Contreras got her award, and I, the architects were out front, and many of them had goggles where you can take a virtual view of the schools. And of course, I was walking through the clinics, maybe, and it was amazing, the space that is going to be built out on those eight schools. And I encourage you, and I encourage the citizens of Guilford County to support that space in every school.
So that doesn't, we won't have to spend any additional monies to configure what he's talking about?
No, that's part of your school plan.
I'm asked, she knows who I'm asking, so...
It's part of the design.
All right, all right, thank you.
Board member Tillman, who's on the phone, has a question. Pat?
Thank you, Mrs. Garrett. Dr. Jenkins, you can't see me, but I've been listening very closely to your presentation. Given what you've launched currently with the model at Bessemer, are there any price tags, just so we may be sort of contemplating, as you mentioned, in the future, should the need arise, and it likely will, that we would need to lobby the state legislature into this sort of impactful outreach, school-wide perhaps? What are there, what is the grant, what is, I'm sorry if I missed it in your presentation or your remarks, what is the price tag?
So we've been able to stretch by hook and crook, and a lot of in-kind donations from Cone, to the three schools we're in with a grant from the Duke Foundation for about $280,000. To be able to put this in every Title I school in Guilford County and sustain it for three years until the state can take action because we think that it's going to take that amount of time to prove it, would be a price tag of around $6 million. But in that price tag would include the development of additional CMA and nurse roles in the schools, and placement of those in the schools, and recruitment and development of virtual APPs and physicians to be able to see our students. When we go to 51 Title I schools in Guilford County, we've suddenly increased a patient population to almost 36,000 additional new patients that need to be cared for and seen. And so this is really critical. The sustainability will be in reimbursement through Medicaid. In South Carolina, Medicaid gives facility fees to their schools to help them support their supplies that they need. In Maryland, they're proposing state grant per school to fund the clinic with a budget for the clinic. And we need to work together to creatively find how North Carolina can move in that direction.
Sure. And one follow-up, thank you for that, that's great help. One follow-up to that is, in this three-year period, presumably you would be able to show, or would you, the question is, would you be able to show, you know, the amount of obviously preventative care as much worth in expenses and urgency, right? We know that screenings and identifying health issues among children is critical to big time.
Significant issues or hospital stays. In your work, will you be providing sort of those numbers as well that would show, you know, through this work, we're able to, whatever the cost savings may be on the other side of the healthcare equation?
Yes, sir. So we have worked to develop a partnership with the innovation part of the Department of Public Instruction, and they are providing us an analyst so we can do school-to-school comparisons, so we can look at a school with the demographics of Bessemer and the rates of absenteeism and early dismissals, and compare that to another school within state prior to our intervention and post our intervention, show we, can we show effect on those numbers. We also are able to look at the students and see if we prevent them from utilizing the emergency room by terminating care and creating less of a burden on our state Medicaid program. And finally, we have to rely upon survey data that we collect from the parents to understand what is the impact on the reduction of cost to the parents for potential loss of income when they have to come to the school for early dismissal, for transportation burdens, for care burdens that they have. If you show up at the emergency room, I guarantee you, you're going to walk out with $2,000 in bills. And this sometimes follows families forever.
Great, great. Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing more of your work.
Thank you, sir. We look forward to doing it.
Well, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I just want to say, I mean, I'm so excited about this. My nephew went to Bessemer Elementary School, and a lot of people might not see health and wellness as an academic component, they might see it as something non-academic, but it absolutely impacts the instruction, the lactation, and breastfeeding opportunities as much as I would encourage all of our students. Teen parenting is very difficult and would discourage that as much as possible, but also knowing that for our staff and for students, that breastfeeding has been a first food practice for many cultures. I just got a notice from a news app that I'm on that United States stores are starting to ration formula, which, you know, might be good, so that we can get back to what they refer to as liquid gold, you know, for, which is healthy for children. And their development, probably 15 years ago, there was an effort with the local foundations and the court system to stem the flow of children coming into the foster care system, and it was a multimillion-dollar initiative, and it was around attachment. And we know that breastfeeding is, and attachment security are closely tied, that children experience less physical and emotional neglect and abuse, they have lower ACE scores, those adverse childhood experiences, and then come to school, you know, without additional barriers. So I just hope people understand the importance of health and wellness and education, and thank you all so much for the tangible results that we... And thank you all so much for the tangible results that we'll see right away. These are maybe more results that we'll see over time because they're developmental. So I'm really excited about this, such an asset and benefit to our students. And Board Member Bellamy Smalls, I remember one of the deputy chiefs at the police department, we looked at this for child welfare, and it was those same hotspots as you were just talking about. And we spent a lot of money, and we've launched a lot of programs, and we're still here. So we have to go deeper.
And we love the partnership with our schools, with our guidance counselors, with our social workers. It's been very, very helpful. And I'll end with just one little story because I love stories because they tell the mission. So we had, we had a student at Bessemer who was referred because he had face pain. And the teacher saw him kind of grimacing through his mask. And she sent him to the telepresenter. And the telepresenter removed the mask. He had been hit. He had been struck. So we partnered with our team at Bessemer. And we got together and we talked about what we need. And they immediately recognized, they said, this parent has a history. We need to do something. And we, as a team, supported an action taken to protect that child. And so it's not always health. It sometimes is risk. And mental health will be a key part of this. And then learning how to integrate into a wider community of services. We're not the only answer. We are a part of the answer that we want to be, that you provide us the opportunity in your schools. And thank you for it.
All right, let's see, that was so engrossing. We are now at action items. Item A, Budget Amendment Transfers Report. Anita?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, was there a motion?
You need a motion first, and then there's discussion.
On the action items? Okay, is there, is there a second? Anita?
I'm not sure what we just did.
Because that was. Turn your mic on.
According to Robert's rules, you make a motion, and then there's discussion of that item because it's now an action item.
It was on the consent agenda?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so Anita?
Okay, whatever. I thought we'd approved the agenda. Done a lot of work on the budget amendments and transfers. And what caught my eye on that was the State Public School Fund. In the budget amendments, we increased policy leadership in public relations by $99,644. But in the budget transfers, we took that money back out. So I started, is that correct, Angie?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I started thinking, okay, these things in a lot of places, while it looks like a ton of money, offset each other. So I did a spreadsheet. And every one of your codes, 5100 through 9200, everyone that had a budget transfer, I did the state, federal, local capital outlay in the special revenue fund. And when I got to the bottom line on that, a couple of things concern me. And I'm not exactly sure what they mean. And one of those was code 5300, under alternative programs, increased, the net increase was $7 million. Tech support decreased almost $5 million. The one that really caused me a lot of concern was code 6500, which includes utilities, maintenance, custodial services, transportation, and facilities decreased by 5.9 million. How are we going to replace that? I mean, utilities and transportation costs have skyrocketed. So when we have a $5.9 million decrease in that budget, how can we do that? Did we, what happened?
Right. So I can appreciate the exercise that you did to try to look at this in net. But I also think it's important that we understand that each fund kind of operates separately. So when you look at, and I think I sent you some information on 6500.
6500, yeah.
And then, so when you look at what's happened in the State Public School Fund, where we had additional funding for transportation in the amendment section, and then we had an increase of 9300 in the transfer section. So the amendment section is because we got additional revenue in transportation. And in the transfer section, it's because, but we have, we have 24 restart schools now. And the state requires that we transfer a specific amount into the restart program for these schools. So when we do that, we typically do that to gain the most advantage for the district is we typically transfer teacher salary dollars because we can transfer those at the average teacher salary. And since we have such a significant number of low-paid, lower-paid teachers or newer teachers, then we haven't, we gain dollars when we transfer teacher positions into the start, restart program. But then that means we've got a lot of dollars sitting in the restart program, and not all of those inexperienced teachers are in restart schools. So we have to use those restart dollars to fund other things and keep our inexperienced teachers on local funds. So we use those dollars for transportation in our restart schools, for some utilities in our restart schools, for some custodial work in our restart schools. So when we look at what we've done in the state fund for 6500, that's very different than what we did in Fund II for 6500, where we had a reduction, oh, we had an increase of $4,700, which probably was a school moving something to a custodial account or something.
It was $47,000, I think.
I'm sorry, $47,000.
But the big hit in that code was the federal budget transfer.
Right, and so that's, if you'll recall, we had, when we did our ESER budget, we did our initial ESER budget based on a plan. And we budgeted those dollars based on our, on the kind of the first blush of the plan. And then we had to go back and change based on this board, when the board took action to provide bonuses to all staff. That meant we had to kind of rework our ESER budget. And so a lot of these dollars are in our ESER budget, the change, are the changes in the ESER budget that you see here.
Is that the $19 million under code 5100?
That's, yeah, that's a reason, that's where a lot of those dollars went.
Well, the net effect of the whole thing is $441,000. If you net all the transfers.
Right.
In and out, that's the net effect. It's the increase of $441,000. But talk about tech support. That's critical, or has been critical in the past two years. But yet, that budget decreased, and most of it was federal, by 4.9 million.
Yeah, and I would say it's significant. And I can do more research because I didn't get down into the details when I was doing this. But right off the top of my head, again, we redirected some dollars for the bonuses. Also, some of the technology that we had budgeted in our ESER fund, once we got the FCC grant, the ECF grant, I cannot remember what those initials stand for, but we've got dollars for that for.
Five bucks.
Yep, for technology. So we've repurposed some of the ESER fund dollars for that reason. So I think the ECF fund was on our last budget amendment and that we approved last month. And so the change for the ESER fund dollars are reflected on this one.
Okay, the last big question is code 5300, alternative programs increased by $7 million. And that was kind of spread, most of it was, well, $4 million was federal, $2.5 million was state.
Right, so 5300 is kind of where our tutoring dollars sit. It's where our summer school dollars sit. It's where a lot of the additional supports for students sit in 5300. And so when we made changes to ESER, the $4 million, a lot of that went to the high-impact tutoring in our ESER fund. Let me go to the state fund just to look at that.
2.4.
Is that an amendment or is that a transfer? Okay, that is a result of the restart schools. 5300 is where social workers are funded. So if we transferred positions into restart schools and we picked up their social workers because they were lower paid, then that would be, that would show up in the 5300 as well.
Thank you. Was an interesting exercise.
It's a lot of numbers for not a lot of money, right?
I just want to make sure the public understands and there's no misinformation out there. Because of all the federal funds, the state funds of restart, ESER, and the grants, what you've done is moved the money into appropriate accounts, but there is no reduction in the actual services.
Correct, yes, that is, that is correct. We have, in each fund, we've appropriated or transferred the dollars where they are going to be, where they are being used. We have not reduced services for anything.
So there's not a reduction in technology services, not a reduction in maintenance, custodians. You've just placed them in the appropriate account, given that we have this influx of funds and the requirements under restart.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah?
I had a student reach out to me some months ago, a female student, one of our high schools, actually asking about feminine hygiene products in the schools. And I saw earlier that there was a line in here about feminine hygiene products program. Yeah, no, he all left, no, because I started.
Oh, no, no.
Hitting up everybody. And so I wanted to know, you know, what, do we have a plan for that? It's only $2,000. I genuinely wish it was more. Do we have something specific we would like to do with that? Because if we do, I'm sure she would love to hear it.
Right, so the, a teacher, a teacher at a certain middle school applied for this. This is, these are dollars that are in the state budget that are available through application. Any, any school could apply for it. It doesn't typically come through, I mean, we have to allot the dollars and it comes through our budget, but we don't typically manage the spending of those other than to make sure that they follow our procurement processes and procedures. But this is for a specific middle school. A teacher applied for this grant, and we'll use it appropriately for those products.
If you, would you mind emailing, would you mind emailing me your name? And I'd just like to say thank you.
Sure, I'd be glad to.
All right, if there are no more questions, Anita? We're voting on it.
No.
Deborah?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Linda?
No.
Diane? Pat? And Deana, yes, that passes by a vote of six to two. We are now at Policy 9300, naming or renaming of facilities. Now I'll call on Policy Committee Chair Betty Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Policy Number 9300. It's naming and renaming of facilities as presented.
Second. All right, who was that? Deborah, give it to them. That was Deborah. All right. No discussion? All right, Diane? Linda? Kim?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Pat? And Deana, yes, that passes by a vote of eight to zero. All right, Kim Erby, 2022 Legislative Agenda Revisions, Action Item C.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following the annual Council of the Great City Schools Legislative and Policy Conference, the Legislative Committee reviewed the CGC's 2022 Priorities for Federal Action at our March 29 meeting. The committee recommends adding two federal priorities to our legislative agenda. First, extending the federal school meals program waivers that allow us to serve free meals to all students. And second, urging the federal government to address the undercounting in the census of low-income communities and communities of color. Both of these issues have an outsized impact on diverse communities like Guilford County schools. As the committee chair, I move to approve the revision of our 2022 Legislative Agenda as presented.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Anita?
The second part of that and the census, do we have data that supports that? That, do we know that to be a fact? I mean, I haven't seen the data, so I don't know.
It does. We are going to lose several million dollars in title funds as a result of the undercounting. And most of the large districts across the country are losing millions of dollars because it indicates that we now have less poverty in our districts.
All right. Start with Anita.
No.
Deborah?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Linda?
No.
Diane? Pat?
Yeah.
And Deana, yes, that passes by a vote of six to two. We are now at our monthly vote on universal face covering and mask requirement. Dr. Contreras?
I recommend that.
Turn your mic on, please.
I recommend that the board continue to allow the district and all of its spaces and all members of the community to continue to go maskless in our, on district properties. And I believe we can now go maskless on the buses, is that right?
I still move.
Second. Okay, Diane?
I just want to, I don't know if people are watching what, at least nationally, is happening, but Philadelphia just reinstated their mandatory mask. You know, I realize that we really don't have any control about how the virus moves or how quickly or, you know, how much it'll impact. But I just want people to realize that just because we vote to remove masks does not mean that we stop being cautious and careful about how we still do things because the virus is still very much there. And even if you've gotten one vaccination or even if you've been boosted, you can have what they call breakthrough. We just had a super-spreader event in Washington. And so I realize that some people are trying to play those things down as if, oh, well, it's not that important. But people are still, you know, dying, maybe not as fast and maybe not as many. But they are still getting sick and dying. And there are long-term effects for those who get COVID that they don't have to die, but then they're, you know, going to be crippled with some of the impacts of this, perhaps for the rest of their lives. So I'm going to continue to be a no vote for, because I believe that, you know, those who feel they need to wear masks still need to be supported, that, you know, that they can wear their mask. And I'm going to keep wearing mine because right now, I'm not wishing to die. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. All right. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, well, it's related. You said we're taking, they're not going to be required to wear the mask on the bus anymore, correct? Now, are we still spacing children on the bus? Is that happening? Because, you know, I keep hearing about the bell and that, you know, the start time. And some people think that's because we still have, you know, keeping students apart. So we don't have any restrictions on how many kids can get on other than capacity of the bus?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because some people think our bell schedule is based on that we're still running COVID. So that was my clarification on that. Thank you.
All right. There was, that was seconded, right? Is there a motion seconded? All right, Anita? Okay, Anita?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Betty? Kim?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Diane? Pat?
Yeah.
And Deana, yes, that passes by a vote of seven to one. We are now at committee reports. And I will turn it over to the Facilities Naming Committee Chair, Deborah Nepper.
Thank you, thank you. I do believe we had presenters for the naming?
And Myra Hayes?
Yes, so we are, uh, we have a proposal to, uh, rename the newcomer school of High Point. If you all would like to let us know about that.
Good evening. Can you hear me? So my name is, uh, Christian Walter. I am the principal of the High Point Newcomer School. And, uh, tonight I just wanted to lift up, uh, some of the reasons why our school should be, uh, named after Sylvia Mendez. Uh, firstly, if you look at the demographics of our school district, you're gonna see that close to twenty percent of our student body are students of Hispanic descent. And we all know and we hear the phrase that, uh, representation matters. It's so important for students when they see, uh, that a teacher and administrator looks like them or even speak the same language like they speak. So therefore, uh, we can think about the fact that representation can be amplified and leveraged, uh, through, uh, the, the names that we choose for our schools. Secondly, uh, as you probably know, uh, most of our students that are gonna be coming to the High Point Newcomer Schools are students that come from different parts of the world. And Sylvia Mendez can be a reflection for some of our students. Uh, she's, uh, she showed, uh, a lot of resilience and she was able to remove segregations from schools in California. Thirdly, uh, naming the High Point Newcomer Schools after Sylvia Mendez represents a significant opportunity for the communities of High Point and Guilford County as a whole. Uh, we believe that if we name the school after Sylvia Mendez, our community, the people, regardless, uh, of their ethnic backgrounds, are gonna be able, uh, to, uh, learn about the contributions of another Hispanic American. Finally, and this is, uh, on a personal note, uh, as a Hispanic myself, um, I was born and raised in Argentina and I moved here twenty-five years ago. I'm a native speaker of Spanish and, uh, five years ago, I was appointed as an assistant principal. I was one of the very few Hispanic assistant principals back then. Today we have many more. Uh, last year, I was appointed as a principal for Guilford County Schools and I became the first Latinx male principal. So there's been a lot of work, there's been a lot of progress that we've been able to, uh, get done in our district thanks to the leadership and the vision of our superintendent. I truly believe that we need to seize this moment. If we want to solidify and cement the work, the progress we've been making thus far, one way to do that is by naming our school after Sylvia Mendez. And if we do that, um, you can rest assured today that we'll be making history here in Guilford County, but also in North Carolina, as this will be the first school in the state of North Carolina to be named after someone of Hispanic descent. I'm gonna turn it over now to Myra Hayes.
Good evening. My name is Myra Hayes. I'm the Yale Director for Guilford County Schools. And Sylvia Mendez, one of the things that really stood out to me was this statement. As a little girl in Westminster, California, nineteen forty-five, Sylvia Mendez yearned to attend the beautiful school with a nice playground, where the school bus deposited her every morning. But the nine-year-old wasn't allowed in that school. The nine-year-old was not allowed in that school. So her parents, they paved the way. As a little advocate, as a little person, the parents paved the way for Brown versus Board of Education. They fought to make sure that their child and Mexican-Americans in that area in California and through the whole entire California were allowed to attend the school. So with this, she, all through her life, advocated for her community. Advocated for the Latino community. She was the one that made sure that her life mattered. Her parents instilled that drive and that push. And she has advocated for us her whole entire life. I am a Latina. I was born in El Salvador and came to the States when I was six years old. And to me, the advocacy piece is so crucial. When our children see Sylvia Mendez's name on their building, that's, that will, that means something. That's representation. That right there is hope, hope. Hope that I too, one day, can have my name on a building. That, just that, ah, look at that, the name that represents me. I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak in front of you and just tell you how much it really does mean to me as a Latina. As a Latina, growing up in Long Island, New York, as a six-year-old and knowing that I could and having people behind me to really help me. But throughout my whole life, there wasn't a school named after a Latina. There weren't a lot of Latina mentors, or male or female. So thank you so much for this time and I certainly hope that you really do approve moving forward with naming our beautiful school, the Sylvia Mendez School. Doesn't it sound beautiful? Sylvia Mendez. Thank you so much.
It does. It sounds absolutely gorgeous. And I would like to thank Principal Christian Walter and Ms. Myra Hayes, our EL Director, for speaking. Um, for those who don't know, uh, the, the Mendez versus Westminster case in California was foundational work that led to Brown versus Board of Education, which we all know started the desegregation of the schools in the United States of America. Not many people have heard of Mendez versus Westminster. Uh, prior to this, I had brushed on it and the name was kind of a tickle back here. Um, and I'm happy to say that just having this name come up was enough to urge me to look back and further into our history in the United States and see exactly where these impacts started, what the ripple made that started that drop that went all the way to the Supreme Court. It's a really interesting history if you want to go back and look. And if that name on a building encourages even one more person to do so, I would absolutely recommend this. I did touch base with Ms. Erby and, um, you know, we had a little back and forth, made sure everything was, uh, okay there. And if no one has, or if we have any discussion questions, I'm open to them and I'll hand it back to our chair.
Thank you. Diane and then Anita?
I want to, um, you know, be very clear about where my position is with this. Uh, I want us to, um, recognize, uh, historically, the achievements of, of, of people. But I really feel that the naming of this school should be someone who is significant to, uh, Greensboro or to Guilford County and to North Carolina. Uh, I have nothing against the fact that Ms. Mendez may have, uh, you know, paved the way for Linda Brown and Brown versus Board of Education. But going through the naming process that I went through with, um, renaming Swan from ACOG, people knew who Mel Swan was. They knew what he represented. There were, there are people in this community who whenever you say Swan Middle School, they go, oh, Mel or Melvin Swan or Dr. Melvin Swan. I, I really feel like that we should, um, wait on the naming of this school because if as the, um, um, the demographics say, twenty percent of our Latinx, uh, Latino Hispanic community is in Guilford County, surely there is someone in Guilford County or in North Carolina. I, I did kind of get some information data. We, we've had three, uh, Latinos who, uh, have served in the House of Representatives or in, uh, the state, uh, legislature. Not that I'm recommending them, but I'm just saying that, to me, this name should represent something that the, the kids and families and school, people in the local community, when that name comes up, is somebody that they recognize for what has been done here. You know, I, and, and I, I realize that, you know, I mean, we have had in Guilford County, uh, our Native American community has been here for a very, very long time. And if I'm not mistaken, we do not have a school named, uh, after, uh, Native American. And the contributions, we can dig, uh, you know, historically, you know, even though people don't want us, and look at the contributions that people who live, born, died here in North Carolina or in Guilford County, have made, uh, these contributions. And, and I think we could, we can do a little bit more to recognize these folks because these are our schools and these are our kids and our communities. And I think it's important for them to see those names that represent people from our, uh, uh, our community. So it, it, it's not, I mean, hey, I, I, I'm the first one to say, let's knock down all the doors. But can we recognize people who are local or who regionally mean something to what they've contributed to our kids and our community here?
Thank you. Anita?
Um, couple of questions. The first one is, what is the status of the Doris Henderson Newcomer School?
It still exists. Remember, we are adding a High Point, uh, building because all the students from High Point have to travel all the way to, uh, to Greensboro to get to that site and we have a growing newcomer population.
Okay, and, um, this school's gonna be cited in the Tomlinson Building on the High Point Central Campus?
Correct.
Who was Tomlinson? The building was named after a High Point person, last name Tomlinson, but I don't know the history of it.
We can find that out for you.
I think that needs to be considered because that building is and always will be referred to in High Point. Correct me if I'm wrong, um, as the Tomlinson Building.
And we can keep that, um, the name, uh, say, of the building. Um, and we have done that. Like we have said, that is a Mativa Building, but the name of the school is something else.
Well, I know, that, that was true with Kern's Academy.
That's right.
The name followed the students, not the building. And that needs to be clear for Tomlinson also because that names, that name means something to High Pointers.
Yes, that's fine. We can find that out for you.
Diane Maynuck.
I'd like, I mean, I would like to make a motion to pull this particular naming to give more consideration to, uh, you know, regional, local people of, I'm, you know, I'm not saying that, that not be of, of Hispanic or, or, you know, diversity, but I, I just, I just feel like that naming it for somebody who lived in California, though her impact was, you know, national, it, it, it doesn't, to me, I can't, I can't support that.
If I may, just, um, procedurally, we're not supposed to be discussing this right now. It's supposed to go out for thirty days. Um, the other thing, I just want to honor the board's policy, which is to let a committee make a recommendation. And the board members have the right to vote no. But the committee, based on the board's policy that, um, you just voted unanimously on, says they have the right to bring forward people, and it says specifically, at the national level, state level, local level. And I think we undermine the committee's work if they go out and they come up with a name and then we say, it should be local after you voted on a policy that says they can choose from a national, state, regional, and local pool. So I think, uh, the facilities committee voted to bring it forward and certainly board members can vote their conscience. But there's a committee process. They, uh, engaged in that process, um, honestly and forthrightly and the board should vote on it.
Linda?
My question has to do that, well, the first school is a newcomer school that doesn't truly exist, exist in High Point yet, correct? I mean, do we have that established? It's there or it's to be done? And then I know we, we mentioned the South K eight. That, that's supposed to be built, all right? There, you're gonna come up with a, a name for the Southwest K eight. Okay, I have a little problem naming schools that don't exist.
Well, that's been your policy for years, since I think nineteen ninety-four. That as soon as the board votes to establish a project, the name is supposed to be, we're actually about, um, it should have been named in November twenty twenty according to your old policy.
Right, but like with Kern's Academy, I think we were gonna name, um, one school, Kern's Academy. Something happened and then we had to come back and rename a school after Dot Kerns. So I think it just does cause a little problem if for some reason the Southwest K eight doesn't materialize or we don't get funding or something, but doesn't materialize with the new High Point. Not that I'm saying it's gonna happen, but, you know, I just think you should wait until the facility is. I know that with Southeast Elementary, it was Southeast Elementary until it finally got built.
And why did you just vote on it, Mrs. Welborn? You just voted?
To, for the, the.
The policy says that specifically.
That you name it as soon as it's?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Diane?
Okay, I, you know, it's not my intent to undermine the, uh, facilities, uh, committee. I just felt that out of respect, I don't feel that the La- Latina community, uh, is very aware that we are doing this and I realize that they have thirty days if they want to have input into it. But, you know, we also, uh, and, and just in reference to what, uh, Ms. Welborn was talking about, cause I, that, the naming of, um, uh, Triangle Lake, uh, uh, to make it Kerns, what came up at the same time as the, the Swan naming came up. And, you know, it, it was a pushback of the community that, uh, said, no, we, we do want, uh, Dot Kerns to be recognized, but we don't want Triangle Lake to be changed. So all I am, uh, saying is, out of respect to the Latina community, I would like for them to be able to, you know, have some weigh-in on this and.
They have weighed in on it.
If they are happy with Mendez, uh, Mendez being it, that's fine. But I do happen to represent part of that High Point area. So I have a responsibility to be able to voice, without objections from some of my board members, you know, what I feel is my, um, responsibility to, to constituents.
Again, we are just putting this out to public comment, but, uh, there was a committee process. They chaired the committee, uh, and I'll have, uh, Jose Oliva come up. We did engage the, uh, Latino community in this process.
Yeah, good evening. Um, yeah, we have collective feedback from several members from the community, especially elders, uh, in the community. And I want to say that it has been well received about this opportunity. As a former, uh, newcomer school student, I, I can say that I feel very proud for the work that the facilities committee has done to bring this name forward. I do want to remind, uh, this group, just for some history here in North Carolina. In the, in nineteen ninety, uh, there were only about seventy thousand Latinos, uh, in North Carolina, which were mostly farm workers. Uh, just a few years later, in the last census, the Latino community is over a million Latinos in North Carolina. Uh, most Latinos in North Carolina, uh, the average age, age is twenty-four. Uh, so it's a very young community. Uh, but again, just as one of those Latinos, I want to say that, uh, the, this work of the facilities committee has been well received in the community, uh, at least to the elders that we have talked to. And I'm sure many of them will come and, and provide feedback during that, um, period, uh, where we're gonna be receiving feedback, but, um, so far it has been well received.
I apologize if you feel that I have been disrespectful, but I do feel that I had a responsibility to at least have this conversation be had. Thank you.
Thank you. So this will go out for thirty-day public comment period? And, um, I think, huh? I don't think we vote on this, do we?
No. No, you don't vote.
That's our policy.
The committee reports out and it goes out for thirty days. The committee reports out and it goes out for 30 days.
We vote when it comes back. Didn't we name the Airport Area High School and awarded a contract to a contractor? And it never happened.
I think you're thinking about the same school that Linda referred to. I think we, and we purchased the Catholic school. I think it was a Catholic school. We purchased the school in High Point.
No, I'm referring to the Airport Area High School. It was like a $70 million high school.
I don't remember ever naming it. But I remember when we changed the policy to say...
We awarded a contract. To harden construction.
Really?
We did.
I'm just saying, that's, that's because that's your policy that says that.
So I'm just saying that we had named a school. We did.
We didn't own the land, did we?
Well, we awarded the contract. And it didn't happen, but all I'm saying is, is it was consistent with our policy. We had named a school and we had been, we had awarded a contract for a $70 million high school. And it was called Airport Area High School.
Was it a design contract, not a construction contract?
Nope.
Whatever the case, the board's policy before tonight said, as soon as the board approves a project ordinance, the school is to be named. The, what you voted unanimously on tonight says the exact same thing as the old policy.
All right, so it's going out for 30 days. We do have closed session business tonight. I'll turn to, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Well, we talked a little bit about it. Linda had brought it up.
We already have a Johnson. I mean, in, in High Point, we've got Oak Hill and we've got Oak View. People keep those two schools confused all the time. One of them is mine, so I know the difference. We have Johnson Street. So now we want to name the K-8 school Catherine Johnson. I, I just think we confuse people when we do that. If we wanted to name it Dorothy Vaughn, but to have two Johnsons in High Point, it's like, which oak are you talking about? I get that all the time, so I don't know if any, if that was discussed at all. But if you want to pick one of the three women in Hidden Figures, I don't have a problem with that at all. But Johnson, when we already have a Johnson, Jackson, we already have a Jackson, so that would be, that would leave Dorothy Vaughn.
Okay, Kim?
I'm just trying to understand what is actually happening here, because what's really confusing to me, Southwest, Northwest, Southeast, and, and all of those directional schools that don't have real names, to me.
That's why we did that.
So you have Southwest Elementary, Southwest Middle. It's what y'all do here. You read, you name things the same names. So we're just following the same protocol of what is the flavor in Guilford County. I don't see that any different. This is a naming of not just a regular school. This is a science-themed school. So her naming and her work stands behind the theme of that particular school. So that's one reason why, you know, I'm definitely supporting Catherine Johnson and all of her great work. No one's talking about the work that the, that this person has done and the opportunity to lift a black woman in Guilford County. So I'm, you know, I just don't really understand what is happening here among us. It's going out for 30 days. And if the community says so, then that's what we'll do, as what we always do.
I just think if we, again, if we have a community, a committee process, there were, I think, Mrs. Erby, you were on this process. There were about 30 people, including the county commissioner, the head of the High Point Foundation, the head, the Urban League in High Point. There were parents, there were all sorts of people in this. Either we're going to honor our committee process or not. But we can't do this. We can't say we have a committee and then we, even though it is absolutely the board's responsibility, but if we're not going to honor their process, let's remove that from the policy.
Linda?
Yes, because there, when you talk about committees and the policy on the committees, it says the committee does not speak for the full board. Now, what's happening is we're switching that to where the committee speaks for the full board. I disagree with that. I mean, I have, you know, just because three people decide that this is what we're going to do, and then you guys get up, because we went, with, with, I'm, I'm standing.
Not that committee, Mrs. Wellborn. You all have had, before this policy change and with the new policy, a community-based committee led by the principal. Michelle Bigpen followed your policy, formed a full committee that met multiple times and came up with the name. If we are not going to consider the communities, the school communities, that's fine, because it's your legal responsibility and right to name the schools. But then take it out of the policy.
We, we've had this conversation before. It is our legal responsibility. And that has been, how, I want to word this carefully. That responsibility has been turned over to a committee. And I don't think, you know, the, the law says it's our responsibility for a reason. Not a committee's responsibility, our responsibility.
And my biggest problem here is that we, the committee says, does it. We're not supposed to speak up in any way, what our opinion is of it. Not that I am fine. My issue is we're naming schools, which is a different issue, which I have a right to bring up, whether it's in here. Because there again, as you also gave an example of where we named a school that didn't come to fruition, and then we have to try to rename, because now we've honored someone and made that commitment to them. So then when, if it does not come to fruition, then we're, feel like we need to now try and rename that individual, because we cared enough to do it, right? So that was just a point of issue. Now, granted, it is in here. Diane had other concerns that she wanted to vote, voice. It doesn't mean you have to agree with any of us. But I feel shut down every time that these committees come forward, whether it be policy, whether it be renaming, whether it be anything, that I'm not supposed to say anything. And I have a problem with that. It's like, boom, this is it. Be, we're putting it out, and you're supposed to be quiet and let it go out. And then when we come back, I'm supposed to, like, be fine with it. So I'm just having a problem with it.
Thank you. Betty, and then Deborah.
Yes, thank you, ma'am chair. We had policies meeting, we had ledge meeting, we had renaming meeting. But let me speak about the policy, since you brought that up. We voted on having the ideas going out for 30 days for public comment. And then afterward, it come back to the board. Most of the time, no one engaged in anything as far as the public comment. We don't receive anything at all back. But once again, it was voted on, well, for 30-day comment, and then come back. No one makes any comments on that. So then it comes back to the board for us to vote on. And that is something that we have already mentioned, and we have voted on it and it passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah?
I would also like to say that the, all of the committee meetings are open to you guys. Everything is announced ahead of time. They all show up on our calendars. The agendas are posted. If there is anything that would need to be brought before a committee while this is in committee, it is very easily obtainable knowledge, and you're welcome to come and give feedback at any time, as you are during this 30-day comment period. I, Ms. Sharp made the comment that, you know, there was not very, that there was no communication between the committee meeting and between now. But as I can say as committee chair, that no one has reached out to me to discuss any concerns and express any issues, either with this name or with the policy coming up that directly affects my committee. I understand that there were things that wanted to be said in public where they could be heard and concerns to be expressed, and that's fine. But if you're looking at it saying, nobody has an opportunity to say anything, these committee meetings are scheduled. You can absolutely come. We will absolutely listen to comments. And that's what this 30-day period is for. The doors are not closed to you, as far as my committee is concerned.
Right, but I, I just want to point out again, no one is trying to shut anyone down. But we can't change what our viewpoint is on public engagement when it doesn't comport with our view on what the name should be. I also find it curious, when the names are three women of color, we suddenly don't want community engagement. I'm talking. So I think, Linda, the point I was making to you was you just voted on this unanimously. The board policy all along has been to engage this community. For the 25 years or however long this district has been in existence, we have engaged this community in the naming of schools. We have honored the committees for 25 years. Now suddenly, it, the board wants to sit here and name it themselves. That's fine. But then don't vote unanimously on the policy and tell the community we want to engage them in the committee process. Just take it out of the policy. And also, don't tell board members, oh, engage the community, when it's something else that will just conforms to your opinion on some other issue. Either you're for public engagement or you're not for it. But all of these, and then saying now, don't name a school until it comes to fruition. You always have. That's in the previous policy, it's in the current policy. And I'm not going to sit silently because you feel shut down about it. That's your policy. I didn't create it, you did.
All, all, all of the committees, for the most part, bring back recommendations. Didn't you chair the Legislative Committee? And you brought back recommendations.
And everybody was allowed to speak on those.
And everyone's allowed to speak on this, and everyone's allowed to vote on it. So the entire, the full board gets to vote on this when it comes back.
But we're reprimanded when we speak on it. Now, my issue is, whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, we have had situations, now, I'm just making a statement. You don't have to listen to it, okay? But it has become, it was an issue in the past about doing this. You know, you can say, yeah, Linda, you're right, but we're, we're going to, and just to say, fine, you're right, and we'll move on.
Go to the Policy Committee meeting and, and have the discussion there.
I will be glad to.
Because they have been on the calendar. Wasn't that, Deborah, wasn't, aren't the meetings posted on the calendar? For the, so you can come? I was at the, the meeting.
I have no problem, and you can say, please come to the next Policy Committee and bring this up.
I don't think she has to ask you to come. I think you have the right to go.
So, I mean, I have no problem with either one of the names, which is what was being brought up. Either names, excellent names. Any of the ladies on Hidden Figures are excellent. Examples of intelligent, bright women of color. So I resent that. Number two, I'm only bringing it up because I have seen this happen, and Dot Kerns was a prime example of it happening. Now, that's, so I don't, you know, I'm a little leery, but I will bring it up at the next Policy Committee. But yeah, don't, everybody doesn't have to get, you know, because someone voices their opinion, have to make a big deal out of it. I'm voiced, I'll be glad to come to the Policy Committee and say, are we sure we want to do this? But that'll be the end of it.
April 28th at 2:30. All right, so this is going out for public comment, and we are now at motion for closed session. Anita?
A move we go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss personnel matters just protected by state law.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Dana?
Yes.
I'd like to have a point of personal privilege. Would you prefer I do that now or after? It doesn't concern naming anything.
Can you do it after?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. I don't think this will take long. All right, we are now back in open session. Anita, I'll turn to you for your point of personal privilege, and then we'll...
Yeah, there were a number of community members who signed up to speak tonight, but we're not allowed to do so due to the 30-minute rule. I would like for us to establish a procedure that those who were too far down the list to be able to speak be moved to the top of the list at the next meeting. If they desire, if they still desire to speak.
There were a lot of other people on the list, and Dr. Funderburke can probably tell us, because there are probably people, there could have been people before them, is what I'm saying, on the list.
I'm just saying that they were, they would have made us outside the 30 limit, 30-minute limit.
No, that wasn't the problem.
No, it, but, so it is the 30-minute limit. I did speak to Jill about this, and we did look at about 40 different policies. I think what the issue is, is that we probably should be signing individuals up no more than 24 hours before the board meeting. That's what most policies say. That you sign up the day before, up until noon of that day. So I think the policy committee should probably review policies and come up with a recommendation for the board, but to roll them over to the next month, we'll just roll them over for six months' time, and the issue won't even be relevant anymore, is what we discussed today. Like, they would just be on there, and they may not even be concerned about the issue that they were coming to speak to anymore. The other thing the board can do is consider what we saw in other policies, which is limiting the speech to items on the agenda, which is in many of the board policies we saw as well, and then opening up the discussion, other avenues for anything else, so that individuals are following board policy on resolving issues at the level closest to them. So there are many things that the board can do, but I recommend that the board look at policies from across the state, across the country, like-sized districts, but just rolling them over to the next month will have you rolling over names for months at a time.
And the, I wasn't sure if there were other people here that were on the list, I wasn't sure where they were. So they might not be the next peo, I, I, I know, you might not have been the next person in line. There were other people here that didn't make the 10, and so...
I understand.
And so we, if we made an announcement to say, anybody here that signed up that didn't make the 10, and then go back and look and see where they were on the list.
I know that, that...
Dr. Funderburke.
Dr. Funderburke had the list.
Mm-hmm.
And the time, because I asked for it. And all I'm saying is, I think those people who were on that list, no matter who they are, should be given the opportunity to be first at the next meeting if they desire to speak. And why would we not do that?
Because you're rolling them over for months.
So that means the next people, that, that means at the next meeting, if people don't show up, then they can be rolled over too. Because some people say, well, I didn't come because I didn't know that, you know, if somebody else didn't show up, then I should, just because I wasn't there, doesn't mean I shouldn't be given the opportunity to be on the list. So I think what Dr. Contreras is proposing is to have a process in place, it comes from the policy committee, about how we fill in that time. We just went to the 30-minute limitation for years, everyone that signed up got to speak. So we just went to this. So if we need a process to decide then, if people don't come, how do we make sure that we can utilize the 30 minutes for public comments?
I'm not worried about the people that didn't come. I'm worried about the people who got on the list, were told they would be able to speak, and then we retracted that and said, no, you can't speak.
They were not told they could speak.
I saw the email, they were told.
People were told tonight that they could speak?
No. I saw the list of the people. I have the emails where they were told you are on the list to speak.
Dr. Funderburke.
And then that was retract, I've got it in writing, Sharon.
I'm not saying you're lying, I'm saying the email said, we are in receipt of your email.
No, I read the email, it didn't say that. It said you are on the list to speak.
Dr. Funderburke, could you say what the email said?
Greetings, Madam Chair and the board. The email stated that I have received their request, and they will be added to the speakers' list. There was no confirmation given that they are speaking. Once that list is compiled and it's time stamped, which I sent that list to you with the time stamped, those 10 people are contacted, that they are the speakers. And we always have at least two alternates in place if someone does not attend when they have signed up to speak.
Okay, there were, it showed three alternates, I believe, on the list today?
It did, and we had cancellations yesterday and today. We had three cancellations.
So were those three people here?
Those people were not here, but I contacted them, and two of them I did not hear from. I did not take them off the list because they could have showed up for the meeting.
Board members, I, I think this is, and in, there are a few things to think about when, when you reflect on it and how you want to look at your policy. The first is, for many years, we heard from everybody because we rarely had 10 speakers. I mean, it's, it's an interesting time here in school board land, and we have had 10 speakers a number of times in the last six months, but it is not, it is not a problem we face constantly, it just is the time that we're in. Second of all, there are so many ways to communicate with the Board of Education, and it is really important that you let your public know all the ways that people can communicate with the Board of Education, that public speaking at a board meeting is one of many ways, but certainly not the only way. As we have such great interest in speaking, opening up those lines of communication is a great idea, and, and you should say, here are all the other ways, if you don't make the 10, you can speak. But no Board of Education I know is going to be able to accommodate hours and hours of speakers and get their business done. So everybody, this is, this is a common problem, encourage people to communicate with you, this is not the only way to do it. And then you probably, two years from now, will look back fondly on the days when people came and spoke. I know in some of my other counties, we're not having the number of speakers we did for a while. Maybe you will, maybe you won't. But sorting through how to get your business done and hear from your public is important. And so, the many different ways you can provide those avenues while you have such popularity, the better.
Right, this won't be resolved tonight, this has to go to the policy committee to study board policies.
Kim, and then Lynda.
With that suggestion of putting someone at the top, I just want to say, then you automatically start new people, like, at third place and fourth place and fifth place. So it just turns into like a whole, like you said, a continuation of names, and it might not even be relevant to what's on the agenda, you know, the next time that we meet.
You could have, there are times, 40 people have signed up, that means you would have a list carried on for three months.
Right, right.
And I don't know any board that does that.
And one thing we have to consider, what is the purpose of public comment? And I think that is something that we need to have it clarified, even in Guilford County, what is the role, what is the point? Is it just compliance with the law that we have to have a public comment period? And let people know that as well, because many people say, oh, well, you didn't get back to us. And they're waiting for like a response because they came and they made a public comment. So I think that's another thing that we need to clarify as well, when we take it back to the policy committee.
Thank you. Lynda?
For the record, I would like to be invited to the policy committee when this subject comes up, so if you would give me notice that this, this particular policy will be discussed, I would like to be there. Number two, I would like to make a statement now, since people are being allowed to speak on policy right now, so I'm going to take this privilege to state that I do not want public speaking limited in any way as to a subject matter to which they should be able to speak. One of the reasons you come here is to freely bring up issues as a parent, as a teacher, as anybody, of concern to you. It should not be limited to what we are currently discussing.
I agree.
That would be my...
Well, the board can dis, you can discuss that and vote how you want to when we have that recommendation from the policy committee. And Ms. Sharp, if you'll send me, I have the email communication from Dr. Funderburke, so if you saw something in there that was incorrect about what she said, would you please send that to me?
I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, because I do not see that. All right, so we are, I will turn to Board Member Bellamy Smalls.
We didn't vote on the principal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think she was going to make a recommendation for the, to the personnel...
I did too, do a public comment, a board member comment, thank you.
I was just turning to her for the recommendation.
Yeah, we're tired. I make a, a, a motion to amend the personnel report to include the appointment of a principal, a new principal at Swan Middle School.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Dr. Contreras?
I'd like to announce the appointment of Principal Patrick Battle, effective July 1st.
Thank you. We are now at Board Member Comments. Anita?
I pass.
Deborah, oh, I'm sorry, what school? What school? Turn your mic on, Diane, please.
Mrs. Bellamy Small did announce Swan Middle School.
Dr. Melvin C. Swan Middle School.
Thank you. Deborah?
All right, so I would also, would like to, again, extend congratulations to Teacher Leah Carper, one of my northern nit hawks. She has been awarded as Teacher of the Year here in North Carolina, is absolutely, absolutely hard-earned and well-deserved, if you've seen her work with her students. Mrs. Carper, I only have one favor to ask you, I'm going to need you to hang around at least another 15, 20 years, because I got three or four more nappers to put by you, okay? Grimsley Boosters, I would like to thank their athletic association for having Pat and I over to speak, and for calm, rational, and easy discourse, it was genuinely appreciated, and I think everybody came out a little bit better for it, and I hope that they know how hard we're working for them. I would like to speak to the telehealth option in our schools. You know, we get a lot of kickback about things like, you know, parents should be able to take their kids to the doctor. I've said it before, I'll say it again, I, I was that child. My mother was not able on many occasions to leave work and take me to the doctor. There were times when I was very, very much too young, where I stayed home by myself when I was sick, because she couldn't afford any of it. She couldn't miss a day of work, she couldn't pay for the doctor, she couldn't pay for the medicine, she raised four children on her own. And so I, I strongly encourage everyone to please support this as much as you can, because we are talking about the health and safety and well-being of children. And whether you're sitting up here, whether you're sitting out there, whether you're sitting in a schoolroom, or whether you're sitting in a hospital, it is all our responsibility to keep our children well, because they cannot be educated if they cannot even sit, and in the case of the child that has pneumonia, if they can't sit and breathe, air is good. And I would also like to strongly encourage the support of the feeding rooms in these new schools. I've said this one before, and I'm sure I will say it again, the students are not the only people in the buildings. The freak-out factor about teen pregnancies that everybody's going on about is only a small percentage of the point. Teaching is a profession dominated by women. They will be... They will be pregnant. They will have babies. They will want to breastfeed those babies. And they're going to need somewhere to sit and do that, where they can have them in its privacy and peace and quiet, to stop and think about their child that they can't be with at that particular moment to feed them. We can provide them that space. We can provide them that comfort. And when we talk about supporting our teachers and our people in the buildings, janitors, bus drivers, administration, whoever, that's huge. That's past money. That's saying, we care about your comfort. We care about your privacy. We care about your entire family and your whole being. And I appreciate everyone who's spoken tonight in support of those elements in our schools, for our staff and for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Dr. Jenkins for the great presentation, and of course, for being placed at one of my schools, which is Besseman Elementary. Also, thanks to the Faulkner Elementary School, who invited me to do a reading for the second grade class. Enjoyed myself and look forward to come back. Harrison Middle School has invited me to a ribbon cutting that is for the media center. I look forward to that on Thursday. And Thursday's a very busy day for me, because also I have Rankin Elementary, which is a reading day. And I also have Besseman Elementary again, for a career day. So I will be busy on Thursday, traveling around to my schools. And I wanted to say to all of the staff and the students, please have a safe spring break. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Yes, I want to shout out to Penn Griffin School for the Arts for their production of Legally Blonde. And I had to see my son kiss a girl on stage, okay? And that we were not prepared for, okay, as the opening scene, right? But they did an excellent job. It's a very grown-up play, or whatever. I've never seen the movie, so everything was shocking to me, probably, that went on. And I think we heard a little, some words that I wasn't sure teenagers could really say, but it was part of the play. Our kids are doing good work, though. You know, our teachers are doing good work. And it was just good to see so many families out. Everyone is excited about being back in school and supporting their children. It was a sold-out show, you know, just standing room, you know, for those kids. So that was really important, to get that kind of support at that school. I had lunch this week with high schoolers. I was invited to a high school to have lunch. And we definitely need to work on that. I hope next year will be a better year, that we can provide, you know, better food for our high school students especially. Yeah, it was, I actually went to school on an empty stomach as well. I made sure that I was going to get the full experience of being hungry and ready to eat for lunch as well. I wanted to be very authentic about eating that lunch. They said that I ate most of it, more than another board member that went to eat lunch. So, you know, I won that round, I guess. But it is something that children are concerned about, you know, the quality of food. They were really concerned about their peers that don't have another meal. So they do feel that that meal needs to be robust and have more choices, you know. That's what they wanted to discuss as well. So that was interesting. Let's see. The School Board Association at the Council of Great City Schools, they're doing a special board training that I think that our board definitely would benefit from if we would go, or two or three of us would be able to go. They did send out that information from Ray Hart. So it's just something I want us, you know, to think about, you know, getting the training, the governance training, I think that we need. I just want to read an excerpt right here. "Research backs up the critical need for board training. The eight characteristics of effective school boards," which came out of the groundbreaking Iowa Lighthouse Study, "highlights the school board's role in improving student achievement. Effective school boards take part in team development and training, sometimes with their superintendents, to build shared knowledge, values, and commitments for their improvement efforts. The focus is student achievement, and that is our bottom line, to do everything from a student-centered lens." And I think it just requires us to spend more time in getting that kind of development, if the long-term goal, the end game, is about students in Guilford County. And I think that, I hope that somebody else on the, I'm considering going. I would like to attend the meeting, that training. But I don't think it's beneficial if only one of us goes to that type of training. So I'm hoping that my board members, one or two of you, would decide to go. It takes place in July. And finally, there is a Kobe Fest that's going to be happening. I don't know if everyone remembers Jordan Lee, the teacher, and the students came from Western and they sang. He does this really great community event. And this year, the, the theme is unity, and it's taking place April 29th through May 1st. And he's inviting you to come out and sing with them as well. So I'm going to be participating in that particular event, singing with that choir, that community choir. But it's a great opportunity for us to get out in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
Linda?
I did get to go to the Guilford Educational Alliance Education Summit and got to hear from some gentlemen, at least two of them that were Guilford County School students. And I got to listen to one accord, which was very exciting. I think these young men have bright futures. There was a huge turnout, so that was good. And our superintendent, I think was, as Deana mentioned earlier, was recognized as well. I also went to the Piedmont Triad Education Consortium, and we had two of our schools recognized as doing great things, which is Kirkland Park Elementary, as well as the Academy at Smith. So I want to recognize the, them again. And also, our superintendent was honored as Regional Superintendent of the Year. So--
Thank you. Diane?
First, let me recognize the Faulkner second graders for Learn to Swim. We had fun. Nobody drowned. But the Learn to Swim program is perhaps one of the best things that we can do with our second graders, as far as helping them build confidence and understand the value of, of, of Learn to Swim. When I was in the pool, the second day, somebody came up and said, well, how did you get Skye to do anything? Because she wouldn't do anything yesterday. And I said, oh, I just tricked her into believing that she wasn't going to drown. But, you know, if, if you haven't had a chance to come by and see the Learn to Swim program, we will be, once the pools open, doing some of them at our local community pools. So please come out. But the Faulkner kids did very well. I would like to ask if we would have a meeting in High Point, a school board meeting in High Point, before Dr. Contreras departs, because I really feel that it's, you know, important that, that the High Point community get a chance to at least see her and say hello, goodbye, whatever they want to say. And I know that we weren't doing them there because of COVID, and I didn't know if the, if that has been lifted or not. But if I count right, we don't have but three more board meetings before you're gone. So I just want to make that request for us having a meeting in High Point between now and the time you leave. My next is to congratulate Swan Middle School for their celebration on Saturday for the 100th anniversary of that building being there. But Swan is actually, will be five years old renamed in August. So I hope that we will also have something that designates that opportunity. And I think it's very, I think someone else had mentioned that they are doing excavation. So I'm sure you helped out with that, Ms. Reed, whenever y'all were digging to find those, where the sewage probably was. But, you know, the fact that, that the kids are actually, because the name, there was an elementary school there, and I forgot what the name was.
Cypress Street.
Cypress Street. So, you know, and that's a name I hadn't, hadn't heard before. There wasn't another school evidently at that site. So history goes on. I understand, Dr. Contreras, that you possibly will be on WNAA next Tuesday, on Bottom Line? On Bottom Line next Tuesday?
Great.
Okay. I just want to put it out there so that folks will listen to our HBCU Public Radio Station, WNAA. Bottom Line is from 10 until 11 Tuesday, and it's a call-in show. So 334-7952. So if you want to call in and, and give her whatever, ask questions, whatever. But I'm real excited. They announced it today. So I want to make sure the people are aware. It's 90.1 on your FN dial, if you don't know where to find it. And then, to speak to the food services, and I hope that, I have made enough inquiries about the food services at one of our, at one of my high schools in, in High Point, because the students there were very, very interested in us paying attention to the quality of food. And they are happy with that. And I understand that, you know, there are some things perhaps we can't do. You know, I, I don't know how we resolve the problem of getting food to the point of it feel, being, you know, appetizing to kids. Because what, what is healthy doesn't necessarily translate into what tastes good all the time. And we can't serve pizza all the time, I don't think. But that, you know, we need to respect the fact that they were concerned, and they voiced a lot of noise. And I don't want them to feel that they got shut down about, you know, having their concerns made. Because when another high school, last year, in the northern part of the county, had some of the same concerns, you know, I, I assume we responded, you know, fairly quickly to those concerns. So let's make sure that, that however we need to do it, that the, you know, Dr. Contreras, I, I don't know, maybe you know what the answer is as far as us figuring out, how do we make the quality of food better?
The staff did go out there and had lunch with them. So the new food service director, Mrs. Henry, Dr. Oakley, staff, went out, had lunch, listened to their concerns. And some of it is supply chain issue, some of it is how the school is implementing, and then some of it is, we need to come up with some new selections for the students.
Okay, okay. And, and if we take a, you know, a kind of a, I know we can't do this, but the playbook from our colleges and universities, a lot of them, you know, have the name-brand chains embedded into their, you know, into their cafeteria, so that those students have, they can go and get a, I guess, a mama-cook meal from the cafeteria, or they can go and get, you know, pizza or whatever. So, and I realize we can't, you know, afford to do that. But I'm just glad to know, Dr. Contreras, that the kids were listened to, and hopefully we'll, we'll do something. But that, that's not the only school. I've, I've heard, and I, and I remember seeing this whenever I was serving, is that a lot of the kids will throw, like in elementary school, they throw 50% of their food away. And I know that's not something that we can do. That's why, when my children were in school, I packed their lunch, because they were going to eat what mama cooked. But, you know, that's what I did, because I knew if I gave them money to buy from cafeteria, they were going to throw it away. So, you know, I don't know what other answers we have for that. And then, finally, I'd just like to wish those who celebrate Ramadan, Passover, or Easter to have a wonderful holiday season. And I hope you guys get some rest. And I'll try not to text or email anybody while you're away for your spring break. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just make two brief comments. One, I wanted to sort of lever off of the, the public comment conversation. And I do look forward to joining those conversations in the Policy Committee. I would caution us to be wary of limiting any sort of speech or public comment to just agenda items. I mean, as those elected, you know, as an elected body that helps set public policy and shape the policy, implement that on behalf of our stakeholders and the voters, it's very important that we get their input on, on a range of issues that may or may not be germane to the agenda. I don't know how many times I've taken notes on public speakers on a wide range of topics that I hadn't, that I was not made aware of, because we just can't be everywhere and hear everything. And so I just, I look forward to those conversations. I know there's a balance. We have to be efficient and do our business. But I sure would be, going to be an opponent of, of the, of the public comment period, to the best way we can do that. Secondly, speaking of ways to engage the public, and Deborah mentioned this, is, you know, when you get out into the public, whether it be a town hall, particularly as we have these transformational projects that we're all aware of, that are coming, that are very exciting for the community. And I call it, you know, these are once-in-a-hundred-year type of endeavors, when you look at what we've got in the initial bond package, and then the potential for more. There's going to be some hardships, and there's going to be a balance. You know, priorities and values are going to collide in some ways. We've already seen that. But reassuring the public that we are working on their behalf, and there aren't any secrets, and as details come available, just that they know that we're working every day, not only as board members, but also the staff and others, to help remedy those potential hardships, and real hardships that, that are going to be coming, for sure. And that the long term, in the long view, those outcomes will be better for students and for families and athletes all, all together. But it was good to, to be out with the community and, you know, and then hear them, and listen to them, and take hard questions, and, and, and face the community. And so that was an enjoyable experience. And just thank everybody for all their work. Just wish all the teachers and staff, the students a much well-deserved break. We, we know you've been working hard, and we encourage you to keep doing that. And, but take your time to rest and be thankful. That's all I've got. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Pat. And I will just add to Linda's comments about the Ed Summit. I said some in my report from the chair, but it was, it was a wonderful event. And, you know, it was short and sweet, but it was so well-attended. It was just packed in there, and it was just full of just very inspiring information and presentations. So kudos to Winston and the Guilford Education Alliance, and all of the sponsors and supporters and volunteers. And congratulations to all of the awardees, the Delta Sigma Theta Greensboro Alumni and High Point Alumni Chapter were recognized there, as well as Dr. Contreras. And it was wonderful. It was, you know, mentioned tonight about board's rights, you know, what the board has the right to. And, and we do. We have the right. We have a vote. And that's just not taken away. And there have been times, all depending on the makeup of this board, that there are committees made up of people who have a certain like-mindedness. And, you know, if, or, I hope that our effort is to be a part of those committees and try to come to some kind of collaboration or consensus. And if that's not possible, we just have to accept that that's just the makeup of the board at the time. We also have duties. And part of those duties are, is that, you know, if we want to try to collaborate and work together, we can. But people have also quit when they don't get their way. They've walked out of board meetings, when they don't like how decisions have been made. And we're required to be here. We should be here, because there are sometimes votes to be taken and comments to be made and information to be heard. But we have a duty and obligation to, to, to represent and to be here. So people have walked out of board meetings. Board members have decided they don't want to serve on certain committees, some of the committees that were mentioned tonight. I was at a, I don't know if it was a student reassignment hearing last year, or if it was a discipline hearing. And we have a policy or a practice where the board hears those decisions and makes a recommendation to the board about students' lives. And we were waiting on a board member and got an email that they just had things to do, because at one of our sessions, didn't like the outcome that the board, the full board voted on. So you just can't have it both ways. We have rights, and we also have duties and obligations. And then the last thing I'll say about our duty is, we also have a duty and obligation. We have the agenda, usually, in at least a week in advance. We have been given board training that says that if we have questions, if we need information about that, we are a liaison and a conduit to our constituencies, and we seek that information. And if there's a question that comes to me, and there are, I call Dr. Contreras. You know, she usually directs me to Dr. Oakley, to Angie. I've called Jill on many-- I've called Jill on many occasions, Dr. Funderburke, and get that information. If there's anything I need to summarize at a board meeting, then that's when we do that. But we do our homework before we get here. And we share that information with people who are interested. And again, there's opportunities to summarize that. And so, you know, if you hear that board members aren't asking questions, it's because a lot of them have asked questions prior to the meeting, delivered that information to the people that were interested in that. So we have different constituent relationships. And the last thing I'll say is I was canvassing this weekend for the bond and for early voting. We have tens of thousands of people in this county that are registered that aren't voting. So voter registration efforts have been successful, but voter turnout and engagement needs a lot of work. And so we were canvassing. I met a teacher in my neighborhood from Shady Brook Elementary School. So it was wonderful, meeting people. They were very excited about the new schools, the facilities and what they've seen and very committed and interested in voting. So we'll be going out again next weekend. And it's just a wonderful way to engage folks. And the last thing I'll say is I'm part of this Triad North Carolina Leadership Forum. And it's sort of like a gang truce. They're bringing Republicans and Democrats together to work together on something. And our project together is housing. And so LeAnn Winter and John Hood are the conveners. So you can just imagine the rest of us. So it's challenging, but it's what we're supposed to be trying to figure out. But today was our third session. And career and technical education programs came up.